And Innovation Committee and on the continuation agenda, items thirty-nine and forty are ones which public hearings have been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Very good. Thank you. So, members, are there any items that you would like to call special? Any specials, members? Councilmember McCosker.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, President. I'd like to call item eleven.
Good morning, my neighbors!
That's a separate vote anyway.
Yes! Yes!
I also have an amendment on item twenty-one.
Fuck you too!
What's up, dirty dog?
What up, everybody? Here we go.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez?
Hello, good morning, Council President. I would like to call item seven special for an amendment. The city attorney has a copy to read to the record. I also want to call item eight special for a separate vote, and I have comments right up there.
As I ran in here, I was a little behind this morning, so let me go grab my coffee. I'll be right back.
Yes, I do. I also have the motion from-
I'll be right back. Let me go grab my cough. My cough-e. My cough-e.
Reads that I move that item number twenty-one on today's council agenda, be amended to revise the first and second moving clauses as follows. One, I therefore move that the council instruct the city administrative officer and the personnel department, with the assistance of the office of the city attorney, which is in bold, to provide a report to the Personnel, Audits, and Hiring Committee on the status of memorandum of understanding number thirty-five, relative to hiring hall practices, specific to exclusive and non-exclusive hiring arrangements between the contractor and the union, and the frequency of the utilization of the hiring halls for construction projects. And two, I further move that the council instruct the C A O and the Personnel Department, and all of this new- this language is in bold, with the assistance of the office of the city attorney, to develop a policy framework that includes the establishment of exclusive and non-exclusive, end of the bolder new language, arrangements with hiring halls for key skilled craft apprenticeship programs through the targeted local hire program, including any necessary funding. And is there a second to this motion? I'll second that. Okay, and Councilmember Hernandez's motion?
Yes. And the second motion reads that I move that item number seven on today's council agenda, be amended to add two additional instructions as follows. Three, direct the C A O, L A S A, Chief Legislative Analyst, and any other relevant department to develop a framework that creates a ratio between the impact of oversized vehicle ordinances and preferential parking districts, P P Vs, to overnight parking districts and safe parking program areas in each council district that weighs the geographic size of restricted versus safe parking areas, and considers the impact of how this ratio balances the goal of creating a safe space in each district for their share of unhoused constituents to reside in their vehicles. Four, instruct the C L A to report back in ninety days on the creation of a recreational vehicle task force focused on creating a comprehensive, multi-year strategy to address R V issues in the city.
Ow! Ow! Why did you bite me, man? Ow!
That would be part- a part of the task force, including but not limited to-
You bastard, man! What the fuck did you bite me for? Ow!
With input from many experts and organizations.
Damn!
Two, establish goals and objectives for solving the issues identified by the task force. Three, develop an agenda of item-
Man, that's what I get for running in my own house?
Benefit evaluation of our current R V strategies.
Hi, Francine, damn!
That could be utilized for R Vs, recommendations to improve R V policy.
This fool just fucked me up for running in the house. He made good kitty!
Integrating care-based approaches-
Shit hurts!
Help people experiencing R V homelessness. And four, develop a set of milestones as part of a multi-year strategy-
See the skin hanging off there?
That would implement solutions to R V issues, including but not limited to the city applying-
I'm straight bleeding, look!
For people experiencing recreational vehicle homelessness. Council file number twenty-two-
Straight did that to me right now!
-twenty thirteen, and a balanced approach to create a sufficient amount of safe overnight parking areas per council district.
What the fuck was that for?
Seconds for this motions are of council members from District thirteen and six.
Hit and run my ass, dog, get into me. Bro, I'm bleeding in two places. Hold on. This bastard, dude. Look at that, right? Look at that. Now, look at that.
Um, Councilmember Soto Martinez, specials?
Yes, Council President, I'd like to call item-
No, I'm calling the cops right now, dude. I'm arresting him for domestic violence.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pidi?
I am, Randy. He's going in. Where's Ian? Ian, your girl's here! Where's Ian? Anybody seen Ian? I'm starting to get worried. I haven't seen him in a couple of days. Hopefully, he's just on vacation. It is- it is still summer.
Item number thirty-nine on today's council agenda.
Where is yesie at? Oh, my lie sign, yes, 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 thank you. Fucking cat. Hopefully, the internet's working today. Well, it worked for four hours last night, just late night. Damn it, that shit hurt, bro. This shit's legitimately bleeding right now. He craves attention. I just gave him food. I just fed him. It's why I was late two minutes. I could fucking feed him so he wouldn't bother me. And that's what I get. Little bastard. Yeah, it's max volume. They're low. I can do this, turn the gain up, but then it may get echoey. You're the only one, Marv. Damn! Fucking cat, dude. I'm calling Animal Control. He's gonna go to jail and sit in a cage, and he's gonna miss me. Thank you, Brian. I'm sending him to jail. I'm tasting the blood. I know what my blood tastes like.
Very specific example in my district, when I have R Vs parking parallel to a sanitation yard or to a D W P location, again, that is a perception that the city is not working together. But what we really need is for D W P and sanitation-
So, now it's their fault?
Uh, street services and D O T to realize that at the end of the day, these are all of our spaces next to each other that they're on, so we have to make sure that we take those into consideration.
If he was in front of your house, you'd have him moved in a moment. One moment, they'd be gone.
Thank you. I ask for an eye vote.
Okay, we all know that if it was in front of your house. Is she over there snorting again?
Speakers, I apologize, just disappeared for some reason. So, if you have other matters that you'd like to call special-
Either this chick is constantly sick or she's snorting something. One of the two. One of them Adderall girls. I love that Adderall. It makes me feel so focused. Yeah, you're doing methamphetamine. What do you expect?
And that would be August sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Item eight is continued. Thank you.
Very good. Without objection, that will be-
Just sitting here bleeding, like legitimately bleeding on down my leg. Fucking ache.
All right.
I don't have anything to wipe it off.
So, Madam Clerk, what is available now for us to vote?
Okay, clean paper.
Mister President, council may now vote on nine, ten, twelve through fourteen, sir.
All right, those items are now before us. If there's no members wishing to be heard, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve eyes.
That ain't catch-up.
Thank you. I'd like to go next to our-
Uh, Mister President?
I don't want it dripping everywhere either. It's disgusting. Thanks, stinks. Appreciate you attacking me for no reason. So kind of you, sir.
Let's go ahead and do that, then. Um, I think we can take those up, uh-
Ah, that's love right there.
So, items three through six are now before us. Do any members wish to be heard? I see no members wishing to be heard. Let's open the roll on items three through six.
Thank you, B J. Yeah, stinks, cut me, bit me, scratched me, and bit me because I was running in the house. What he does is when I run, he does this weird thing where he comes up right beside you and like tries to like jump towards your legs and then runs off. And he did that once, then he did it twice, and then as soon as I made the corner in the hallway and came in the room, oh, bro, he was just argh, argh, got me twice in my leg. I'm sure you heard me scream. What the fuck? This shit hurt. Slash me and bit me. Bastard. Ain't no dogs doing that. What's wrong with them cats?
All right, very good. Well, let's go ahead and read in those-
I know, I need to go clean the wound. I probably will do that right now. It is leaking, still. I'm not trying to get cat scratch fever, but I don't think you can get it from him anyways because he's- he's not out and about. He's only in the house. He is a bad boy. Not me, him. I'm not gonna let him diss or smack me like- because he took off. He's fast. Go ahead, try to catch him. Oh, here he comes in the room now. Better get out of here. I don't want you in here, fat boy. You're a bad boy. I'm not touching you. I'm not touching you, bad boy. No, don't touch me with your tail. You're a bad boy. Yeah, you're a bad boy. I don't touch you. You're bad. Don't touch me. Don't touch me.
There's a recommendation to expand up to a hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred in settlement. Item twenty-six in the case entitled-
Yeah, you're a bad boy. Only bad boys bite their owners. Great, now you're sitting here with me, huh? Trying to act like he's all like, oh, what happened, Dad? What happened? I don't- what went on?
Item twenty-eight in the case entitled- Manuel Macias versus City of Los Angeles.
Be a good boy.
There's a recommendation to expand up to a hundred and fifty thousand in settlement.
Oh, really? Just me?
Item twenty-nine in the case entitled David Torres et al versus City of Los Angeles.
I'm gonna go clean it really quickly. I'll be right back. This ain't doing anything. You squirt, clean, soul me.
Item thirty in the case entitled-
Yeah, you did. You scratched pop so bad. Look at all that. That's from you, stuntin'.
There's a recommendation to expand up to five hundred and ten thousand in settlement. Item thirty-one in the case entitled Mary Lynn Ashby versus City of Los Angeles. There's a recommendation to expand up to a hundred and fifty thousand in settlement. Item thirty-two in the case entitled Stephanie Anushe Cortez versus City of Los Angeles. There's a recommendation to expand up to four hundred and fifty thousand in settlement. Item thirty-three in the case entitled Hiladoro Lara versus City of Los Angeles. There's a recommendation to expand up to five hundred thousand in settlement. Item thirty-four in the case entitled Andrea Marsh versus City of Los Angeles. There's a recommendation to expand up to one point five million in settlement. Item thirty-five in the case entitled Dan- Danielle Tobelson versus City of Los Angeles. There is a recommendation to expand up to seven hundred and fifty thousand in settlement. Item thirty-six in the case entitled Amir Med- Medizade versus City of Los Angeles. There's a recommendation to expand up to four hundred and ninety-five thousand in settlement. Item thirty-seven in the case entitled Nancy Gossip versus City of Los Angeles. There's a recommendation to expand up to one million, one hundred and fifty thousand in settlement. Finally, item thirty-eight in the case entitled Dever Jackson versus City of Los Angeles. There's a recommendation to expand up to three hundred and fifty thousand in settlement.
Very good. Thank you. So, members on items twenty-two through thirty-eight, Mister Blumenfield in the Budget and Finance Committee recommend an eye vote. Do any members wish to take any of those items up in closed session? I see no one so indicating, so we can vote on those collectively. Items twenty-two through thirty-eight are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Twelve eyes.
I'm suing.
Very good.
I'm suing stinks. So, I'm suing. Taking his ass to court.
No, sir, there is not.
All right.
Of course you can sue. All right, we see Shenico Figueroa. He's in there. I don't see Spindler or Herman. That doesn't mean they didn't sign up and go outside and have fun. They like to do that.
Councilmember Hernandez does have some special guests to introduce. I'd like to call on you, Councilmember, to do that at this time.
Okay, thank you. Please join me, fellows over here. Come on over. Thank you, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
She losing weight. I don't care what nobody tell me.
Some of our incredible team, Sabrina, Emily, Cynthia, and Mitra, who have been throwing down with us over the last year, building up climate resilience-
Throwing down, eh? The Down Ass Kids? Is that who this is?
Climate Action Corps connects emerging leaders dedicated to advancing a climate agenda to local offices across the state to support in their collective efforts to make California a greener, healthier place to live. Not only have my team and I learned so much from our fellows during their time here, but they've been in the district week after week, event after event, connecting with constituents and providing them with resources-
She's gonna have that weird Ozempic face.
For recycling, composting, and more. Last Friday at our C D one movie night in Chinatown, they distributed their ten thousand-
Thank you, Rob. Let's go. Thank you, Rob Adcock.
Please, huge round of applause. Ten thousand! They have mobilized many of our residents to be more climate conscious, and we're incredibly grateful for the fellows' commitment to sustainability and environmental justice and community.
Jesus, that was loud.
For many folks, their interaction with our fellows are the first time they're hearing about the impact of food waste and the ways their actions can make a difference. We have people in the Westlake neighborhood going to drop off their compost-
You get out of here.
Places like Cultiva Lay, a farm right next to the Rampart Police Station.
You did that to daddy.
And so, it's just really cool for them to be able to connect the dots of like, oh, I could put these bones here.
What's up, Fumar?
And then I could take this to the- to the garden to be composted.
I'll give my bone.
It's a- it's a process that our team has walked them through. The fellows have brought a wealth of knowledge and energy to our team, and while we will miss their insight and presence, we know that this was a great opportunity for them as it was for us, and it's only the beginning for them. We look forward to hearing about all that they will accomplish, and just so y'all know, they put a motion together that we'll be bringing forth for you all to see around how we can create more opportunities for people to drop off their- their materials to compost sites and public sites. Uh, so, thank you, Cynthia, Sabrina, Emily, and Mitra. Thank you for your service to Council District One. You've made a huge impact on our district, and we wish you all the best as you enter this next chapter. Thank you so much.
Bad boy. What's up, Chrome?
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez, and thank you all very much for your great work.
There's the guilty party right there, waiting for the cops to show up so I can have him arrested.
Before we go to public comment-
Domestic violence.
I think, Madam Clerk, we can take up item eleven at this time?
Uh, yes, sir. Eleven, public hearing has been held, but it's being held on the desk for two members, sir.
I bet. The federally indicted ones or something?
All right, so, we can-
All right, everybody.
Take up item eleven at this time, and I believe there were members who wished to comment on this item.
Some hearts wild.
I'll recognize Councilmember McCosker, followed by Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Um, item eleven-
He is, Randy. Almost got me when I went in there to wash up. Did the same thing, ran up on the side, did the little jump, then took off past me. What up, Jason?
Is to get a framework back from our staff on how we can move all or parts of police hiring-
Yeah, but it's not that hot over here, Trent.
To L A P D. And I realize that there are issues involving the charter-
It's hotter here at my house than it is there, and I'm at eighty-two, so they're probably at seventy-seven, seventy-nine.
The entire process into personnel. At a time when we are looking to meet our hiring goals, uh, we are finding that-
That's right, scaredy cat. I'm gonna get his ass. I'm gonna cut his nails today, too.
Probably a function of having all-
Oh, well, that way he can only bite me, not scratch me.
All of the hiring of the entire city, all in one place. There are functions of police hiring that have in the past been in L A P D. And I will say particularly background checks.
What's up, Paul?
And there are pros and cons to this. The con, I will say the con, when we were leading up to the eighty-four Olympics-
Yeah, Trent, it's not that hot here today. It was last week. Hundred and seven here the other day, last week. So, it was warm last week, but we're out of it for now.
Because we felt, the city family felt at that time that was one of the needs to prepare for the Olympics. And in fact, we brought on a lot of officers-
Tuesday, it'll be ninety-seven. That's the closest it gets to a hundred.
Someone who was here in the city attorney's office and in the mayor's office in the nineties and the early two thousands, there were real flaws with hiring a lot of police officers fast. There were real flaws. We found that when the Rampart crisis came, that there were some officers that should not have been hired.
Just like some of you who shouldn't be hired. I bet you're the same person. You shouldn't be hired either while you point your fingers at them.
Moving some of the functions of hiring so that we can increase our speed.
You do to the city what they did to the citizens.
What are the guardrails to make sure we get the right officers? There are a lot of- there's a lot of knowledge in hiring, and there's a lot of tools.
I love how he does the Bill Clinton, the little Democrat fucking thumb-hold.
In the nineteen eighties or the nineteen nineties.
Fucking biter.
What I want to see back, I want to see back, because I want to see a real framework analysis of how we can put ourselves in a position-
It's only eighty-two here.
Of getting officers, getting candidates through the process faster without giving up any of the protections to make sure we get the right officers. Clearly, when the Rampart crisis hit, by the way, we went through a lot of reforms. We reformed everything from how we check, you know, officers' investments to, um, you know, the- what are the statistics on folks that are pulled over? And we wanted to make sure we're protecting against all of the things that led into Rampart. One of the elements is to move the entire function back to personnel, and that was probably the right thing at that time. We need to see whether or not the department today is different from the nineteen nineties.
DS, man.
And we need to see whether we have the guardrails to do-
Football's way different, way faster. It's a problem with football. It's here before you know it. It's gone before you know it.
I would like to see some parts of it in L A P D to speed this process up.
Seventeen weeks goes slow, I mean, fast.
Is a framework to come back and analysis to come back. I would urge your eye vote, and I think we all need to be clear-eyed and make sure that we are looking at both the value of-
Like, in the first six weeks, your- your team can be done in football. Finished. Start oh and six, you're done for the year, pretty much. Baseball, you can lose the first twenty games and still come back and be a dominant team. It's never happened, but it could.
Thank you, Mister McCosker, for really trying to present the balance on the history and acknowledging what have been the failures, uh, because I think that's important for- for those of my- our colleagues that have not been familiar with the history and the failures of-
Thank you, Jeff Peterson. Appreciate you for the kind words and the dono, Jeff. Happy- happy Wednesday.
I'm not supportive of this, and- and I want to say why.
Shut up, Meg. Not the White Sox.
Like, we all are eager to see an acceleration in the hiring of police officers.
Yeah, I heard about that this morning, Matt. People were pretty hyped on him, too. Sucks.
I'm also eager to see the hiring and the acceleration of hiring for every department-
My friend Brian loves the Vikings.
Within our personnel department. Let's talk about the root of where the problem lies. Because the more we start to decentralize this work, we have more law-ways, more D W Ps, we're going into proprietary functions rather than having a centralized functional personnel hiring department that is efficient, that is responsive, and helps to accelerate the hiring in a manner that doesn't-
Dolphins gonna win the Super Bowl? I'd be willing to put money on that one since that doesn't happen. They ain't winning the Super Bowl.
That you raised, given the history. I think that's a very real concern. It's why there was additional allocation of-
Cards are gonna go- are gonna go crash, vintage?
Resources to aid in the background checks and investigations-
I hate to break it to you, you do realize that vintage has crashed just as much as modern.
Of our personnel department.
A lot of vintage is not what it used to be.
Conversation about where the root of our problems lie, because I think there's a failure all around in terms of procedures-
And I'm talking big cards, fifty-two manhole rookie. Tops. Go look what it was three, four years ago. Look what it is now. Not more money now than it was then.
To how everyone then says, well, fire, you know, fire just as important. Well, what about D O T and some of our D O T officers and all of the- I mean, we can run the game. So, those are a lot of my concerns about this. We have talked about it before. Even preceding me becoming Public Safety Chair with Vartan-
Today, you a bad boy.
Was in the Los Angeles Police Department. I remember we went through and-
Thank you again, Jeff.
Deputy Chief Flores at the time was part of the overseeing-
Panthers a sleeper this year? Good luck with that.
On how to shave off time in the hiring process for L A P D.
I don't know, man.
What we do know, while we have seen, uh, though, you know, those that falsely claim otherwise, we have seen an increase-
I think we need another wide receiver. We need help on the O-line. Rams need a lot of help.
Against other departments in the region, and that continues to be one of our biggest challenges. But when we have these circumstances, for me, that doesn't mean that we now get to, uh, take the process over and how-
Raiders-Bears Super Bowl? That is definitely not happening.
I don't think that's the right procedure.
I'd be willing to put whatever you want to put on that.
When we were going through the process of monitoring each candidate in its- in their overall, uh, process and where they have so many days to respond to-
Welcome, Rob. Thank you for the dono. Shout out to you and K R and all your friends.
Different segments. And remember, it was mapped out. Personnel Department, Arum, the general- the former Assistant General Manager-
Think so, huh, Todd? We'll see.
The moment Personnel got hold of what L A P D was doing to help transparently reflect on procedurally where candidates were in the queue,
It'd be interesting to see what the Lions do, dog.
No one, uh, it was no longer reported-
They had such a good year last year, and they were so close. Goff has gotten better every year. It's more comfortable.
We know this from having, you know, evaluated this. Again, I have- we haven't taken another deep dive on this, uh, in probably a year and a half or so.
They got a lot of young talent on the Lions.
It was the failure of the candidates to actually, uh, you know, respond in a timely manner-
Maybe even over the Dolphins.
Personal statements, or whatever juncture that they were in, that they were part of what was stymying the hiring process.
Might be Lions' time now.
So, again, I just have, you know, I- I- I'm all about accelerating police hiring. I'm also all about accelerating all the hiring-
Do I ever go on other shows?
That are putting our city resources in a deficit. However, I'm not supportive of bringing portions in-house-
As a guest?
A circumstance and a dynamic that then opens the floodgates-
Really about it. I'm in the Calamity Girl Show, then on to-
But more importantly, I also want to make sure that we have a transparent process and an effective process-
Oh, Sports Card Radio. Shout to the brothers at Sports Card Radio, Colin and Orion. Check them out.
And I think that's fundamentally where we need to go.
Good show, man. Every Thursday, YouTube, Sports Card Radio.
Followed by Council- I'm sorry. Councilmember Soto Martinez followed by-
Been on their show a couple of times, um-
Councilmember Soto Martinez waves to Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Hernandez?
Adam Mills Show.
And I have to say, you know, I'm agreeing with some of the things that my colleague, Councilwoman Rodriguez, is saying.
I think that's about it.
Um, when we think about the phone calls that we get, I got a lot of phone calls about trying to fix the sidewalks faster, around cleaning up our parks.
I did a radio K F I with somebody. Who was it?
Around in-house hiring, I'd probably be one of the people to say, well, our fire department hasn't seen their numbers increase since the two thousand eight recession. You know, and our parks are missing a lot of folks and, uh, you know, street services, street lighting, we're missing folks. So, I would be probably one to advocate for a speedier hiring process, which we can't do. We- we as a city, that's not gonna function for us.
See, he knows he's hiding in his box over there.
I think we need to invest in the Personnel Department and remove the roadblocks and bureaucracy that keeps us from bringing good people on efficiently and quickly. Um, uh, this past weekend at Toblerone Park-
I appreciate you, Rob, for another one. Thank you. And your participation, I appreciate you.
Advocating for, um-
Not just the donors. Oh, Brian Suits, thank you. That's it is.
Oscar Eagle was incarcerated, uh, during the time of the Rampart scandal.
That's it. Forgot about Brian, man. I wish he was back here.
He was impacted by that. He, right now, is working with the DA's office and Innocence, uh, uh, legal organizations to get him out because-
I do court live when we watch.
And so, when I think about what could be on the other side of hiring fast, um, even if there have been reforms, it still brings me a lot of pause, knowing that there's still people who are still impacted by the harm that was done in the past. So, I would like there to be accountability to continue following the internal process. So, I'm gonna have to ask, uh, my colleagues to vote no on this. Thank you.
All right, have a good day, Calamity Girl.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna just weigh in on this and say that, uh, I- I agree, and I think most people would agree with the concerns that have been raised by Councilmember Rodriguez and Councilmember Hernandez about having safe parks and also about-
I've listened to it a couple of times when I was there.
The scope of this discussion to include all other departments.
Just wish he was doing his stuff on his own, and he's big enough, man, to have his own massive following.
And, uh, we have budgeted positions that we aren't filling, just like other cities, and that is- And that is a significant problem in our citywide services.
They don't go there for the radio station. They went there for Brian. Now, granted, you might have a lineup that's really good on that station, but Brian was part of that lineup. And that's what the draw was. Yeah, dark secret place. Be nice to have him back.
Item as a first step in that larger citywide process, and I see it as starting the exact discussion.
Yeah, I don't have any Patreon. Never gone on there.
See if there are ways that we can do this, uh, and let's get moving on it. Um, I, I would suggest members that
That's it, Randy.
Sure, it would be great if we could do this citywide.
And all of them, if they got their houses broken to do, what do you think, who do you think the call is to?
This is a first step in one of our top priorities, which is ensuring the safety of
I would guarantee you, most if not any of these pussies have guns to defend themselves in their own homes. They're gonna grab a baseball bat and the cellphone. Please, can you hurry up and get here? Hurry, hurry. Please hurry, LAPD.
Thank you very much. I would just agree. These are all great issues, um, and issues that we, some of us have lived through. And all great issues, virtually all of that.
No, I've never been on Tim Conway Junior Show. He gave us shout outs before, just like John and, uh, the John Phillips Show. They gave us shout outs too, shout out to John Phillips.
Councilmember Rodriguez followed by Councilmember Hernandez.
Yeah, no, I just, I want to go back to the fact that what I think as a first step, I feel like has been missed, and again, it's sitting in Personnel Department. You have an opportunity right now to request in the application process where candidates are failing in the queue. And, and that to me, before we have, before we embark on these other conversations, this is something Personnel has had.
I've never heard of it, Ducati.
And even when I've asked them when we were in budget, they have failed to produce these updates.
Cobra.
Look, we have no shortage of problems to fix in this city.
What's up, Hoocher?
Let's be, let's be really clear, and we have no shortage of vacancies that we need to hire. And none, uh, you know, among all of the priorities we have, of course, our public safety and our response is imperative. But I also have a really big problem with us embarking down this road when I know what is fundamentally still a problem is the processes that we have with our Personnel Department. And that conversation, we're talking about, what we're talking about right now, well, you know, come up, let's figure out what we can pass back off to LAPD. And I'm saying, we're still, we're still ignoring, you know, it's the elephant in the room that we're still ignoring here. And it's the failure for the Personnel Department to have an efficient process, not just about police.
She said yesterday, while she was supposed to be honoring the other person that died. Johnny walked her while his family was right there. What a dumb bitch. Inconsiderate. And I'm a fucking moron with a thirty IQ, and I can understand that you should have waited a minute, honored their son. Gave your condolences, waited a second, then said that. Not like, hold on a second, we know your son died over a cat, catalytic converter, don't worry about it. But Richard Alacón, the Titan died, we lost a Titan, everybody, who was, who was federally indicted for, um, embezzlement charges. Got in trouble, money issues here, and was arrested on it. So yeah, there's that. Google his name. Such a fucking Titan.
But I also made some comments in Personnel that I think are important to this discussion.
Yeah, maybe someday lit there.
Is actually a little bit different, and that's just that, this is a, a national trend is happening in this country that people entering the workforce don't want to be police officers. That's, that's the elephant in the room.
Of course, because your fucking voter base, the ACAB idiots, the fuck twelve morons, those are your voters. That's your base. People on the other side respect law enforcement. They understand that some of them aren't good, and they want to get rid of those.
Obvious murder of George Floyd. That is what kids are seeing these days growing up in this country. And they're, when they turn eighteen and they enter the workforce.
Crackhead Floyd. I know, he was such a saint.
Until we address that, I don't think any of this is gonna happen. And the way we're trying to address it is by doing
Vote Serrano is right. I'd vote for Richard Serrano over any of these motherfuckers. I wish he was in there, because I know he'd give them all shit. And if he's on the ballot in November, I'm fucking voting for him. That's it. Got my goddamn vote.
We'll get to depression and we'll get to acceptance in a little bit. But I will continue to say that because until we have the alternative models of, of responding, we're gonna continue to have this issue.
I didn't see it, Brett, but I don't doubt you. Commonplace now.
Agreeing with what I think the end goal of Mr. McCosker is. I certainly have a lot of hesitation, especially considering the genesis of how we got to the Rampart scandal was, uh, you know, the accelerated hiring of the Olympics. Uh, so, and here we are again, right? The history always repeats itself sometimes, right? But, uh, it's just a report, uh, you know, I'll be supportive of it, but it does not mean that I continue to have many criticisms.
Do you see him staring at you guys through the hole? He's peeking out, he's watching me.
Uh, my colleague to the right about just having a centralized, uh, human resources department, but, uh, anyways, but those are just my comments.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, we don't give a fuck. That's what I would say, sitting there at that table. Thank you, we don't give a fuck. Sit down now. Oh, God. It'd be just like that. With the sounds and everything.
Like, I also know that we don't do a lot of things very well because we create a lot of barriers. But, you know, I would like to see how we can incorporate other departments like FD, um, into a process. And I don't know if they're interested, so I won't speak for them, but
I'm gonna push them into working more as you work less. Maybe you should work more. How's about that one? Huh? Huh? How about you do what you want somebody else to do? You lazy fuck. How about that? How about that?
You live in Nice, two noes? Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, the two noes got crushed out. I see, oh, oh, look who just walked in. Look who just walked in. Fucking Spindler just walked in with the, with the puppet on his hand. Perfect timing, see? He knew. Look at his face, look at his face. Slob in the back. If you'd like to call in and voice your opinion, there you go, it's all your right. I love me some Spindler too. I have him on the show, B, I think he'd go a little too wild on me. Oh, he's gonna be everywhere, Rob, it's unfortunate. He's a loose cannon. Funny enough as it is, he did pass the bar exam. Very hard to pass, I keep telling you, over and over. I've had many friends that tried to pass it, really smart people, couldn't do it, he did. You know who also failed the bar? Your vice president. She failed the bar. Spindler is more bright than your vice president. Think about that for just one moment. All right, here you go. So, just remember that. There's a thin line, ladies and gentlemen, you know, between really bright and really crazy. Very thin line. Did he ever pass the bar in three states? Shout out to him, Rolo, smart dude. That's a smart kid right there. Good to see that there's some still left, Rolo. Sure he's gonna have a great living, you know? Good to see. Yeah, we got Spindler drops.
The items that are open for public comment on the agenda are items one through two. Item number seven as amended. Items fifteen through twenty-one and item number thirty-nine as amended.
All right, so we got about ten. Ten to gen items.
During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction.
As long as it doesn't have to do with Figaro, Jason.
If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more.
You passed the bar the other day for a real joke? Man, congratulations. I don't know why I deserve to have such smart folks in here watching. You guys really realize that I'm the dummy now. Man, he's dumb. Kinda funny, but he's dumb. Oh, you passed the bar like walking by a bar. Ah, I get it. I caught it was way back here and pulled it all the way back.
Yep. Yes, thank you.
I like his tie, it's not bad. It's like a peach.
All right, uh, I'm gonna call a series of names as I call your name. Please come on to the left-hand side of the council chambers where our sergeants can help direct you up to the podium. Peggy Lee, you don't need to speak in the order that I call you, uh, but please just come on up, uh, as I call you.
Pastel coral.
Angela White. Lana Rhodes.
Connie Lingus.
Sean Murphy.
Oh shit, oh wait, no.
Speaker with the purported first name Duarte.
Sean from Canoga Park, you think?
A speaker with the purported first name Monique.
Monique Shanique.
Adam Smith.
Adam Smith sounds sus.
Julian Alexander.
Fucking Julian. Where's Ricky?
And, uh, a speaker with the purported first name stupid, which I assume to be Mr. Herman.
That's fucked up.
Profane racist names, which I assume to be either Mr. Herman or Mr. Spindler.
Hey, by law, I need to hear the whole log. I want to hear all the names. It's good to see Mr. Herman is in there. Oh, I see him now.
And so Sergeant, those will be the only names we'll be taking right now in the chambers. Good morning.
Good morning. General Public Comment thirty-nine and fifteen through nineteen.
Okay, good morning. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items first. Go ahead.
Peggy Lee Kennedy, I am proud, so proud to stand here opposed to item thirty-nine. And I'm gonna tell you why. Because you have chosen here to criminalize a whole bunch of people who are unhoused, living in vehicles, rather than create safe parking. And in your amendments
I'm, I'm sorry, can, can you, uh, let's hold her time for just a minute, just a minute. I need to ask our staff to please take your conversations outside. If you're going to be talking in this horseshoe, you need to take it outside.
Get the fuck out of here.
I can barely hear here.
Fucking assholes. That goes to you all sidebar and motherfuckers. Shut your mouths. Put a sock in it.
Item thirty-nine, when you were submitting the amendments, I recognized council files from the C A O reports that specifically made genuine suggestions to this council body, to this city to create safe parking as a solution, to expand safe parking. And now the new one has completely eliminated it. What have you done about safe parking?
Hi, Ted.
That is a program that already exists, but instead you want to create something that criminalizes people and gives them tickets for being places and places that you think might be
One, it's one minute.
She's angry.
Well, okay, I mean, it sort of takes time when you interrupt me too. May I say the REAP program is, appears to have some class issues here. You know, when you take code enforcement and you target only certain types of code violations and not the big fat code violators that maybe could pay for some housing with those fines, like sixty, uh, apartment building units ill, uh, wrongly converted to hotels, to short-term rental. It's not, uh, they haven't done the code, and they're not paying the property tax for the short-term rental either. I'd like to go to just general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
And continue my problem with Agenda Item thirty-nine. That, you know, these oversized laws that you're putting in and ticketing people for and forcing people to move, continually displacing people instead of creating solutions. That is not a solution. I don't understand why you have to keep doing that. And now you want to do it citywide, and what is these sensitive areas? Buy a park, green space, because you know, RV people may not deserve that? That's discrimination. Everybody deserves green space and fresh air and shade. And where are you gonna push these people? Well, if you're in CD eleven, you're being pushed to CD five or to Culver City. Because every time you put in these laws and you do these sweeps, that's what you do, you displace people. And it's wrong.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Here we go. Viewer discretion is advised. Viewer discretion is advised. No double
I like speaking on motherfucking items in my non-agenda public comment, pumpkin head.
Please begin with the items.
Of dealing with housing. Eduardo, the mayor's housing czar, should know that Torrance, California is providing housing to any white nigger too. Any dumbass juju, any homeless dumb motherfucker. In communication of the Los Angeles housing, go to Torrance, you'll receive your assistance. Thank you, Eduardo. And then we go to this shit on item fifteen, which I spoke about. There's no such thing as housing. I spoke to Torrance, California mayor, and I told the chink, hayabcha, hayabcha too. And he understood that to Sir, I'm on number seventeen now. I'm on number seventeen now, goddamn pumpkin head. I'm on seventeen now. Do you mind? Do you fucking mind?
Mr. Herman, you'll speak to the agenda items. Seventeen has to do with REAP. You can speak to REAP, not what's happening in Torrance.
I'm talking about rent escrow asshole. The only rape you're doing is fucking the people up in CD eleven like you've been doing all your life, jackass. Number eighteen, moron, what they added to. And CD thirteen, dickface, you understand what subject I'm on? Another housing. How much housing are we gonna get to save America and bring back California to its thriving livelihood? Not. And the reason why the physical impact statement by the chief legislative analysis knows that I and Eduardo are right. Our mayor fucked up. Then we go to number twenty. Am I on topic on number twenty? Another CD thirteen. Am I repetitious and repeating myself, pumpkin head? No, I'm not. And the reason why? Because council's action for a street banner program, well, fuck street banner program. You're gonna put, um, smoking scans banners on every fucking tree, every fucking pole and every fucking cocksucker in here because that's what you want. Banners to show that we're all dirty niggers too. Then we go to twenty-one, pumpkin head. I'm still on subject, but fuck twenty-one and fuck you. I'm now into my non-agenda public comment. Justin Torrance last night, as I entertained them for two fucking hours and a half on YouTube. They got a lesson in the First Amendment, Brandon Burke versus Ohio, a dirty nigger. Send the Jews back. I'm on topic. I'm talking about houses, you dirty nigger. Let me get to my point.
No, you're not, and you've been warned before, so I'm gonna move you to, okay, so you're on general public comment, go ahead.
Shut the fuck up and let me talk about Brandon Burke. You kiki motherfucker. U S three ninety-five, four four four, nineteen sixty-nine, a dirty nigger interrupting me again for the second goddamn day in a row. That's a fucking stupid moron, imbecile, retard, four-eyed fat fuck from China or Korea, whatever fucking country you're from. Go back. That's a fucking stupid moron, imbecile, retard, four-eyed fat fuck from China or Korea, whatever fucking country you're from. Go back. If you don't like America, Snyder versus Phelps, you're going to hell. God hates you, homosexual fucking faggots, simplified fucking faggots. Whatever dwarf this three-inch dick is, you are a dick too.
He's crazy.
Next speaker.
He's nuts.
And as we're waiting for the next speaker-
Thank you so much, Skyforge.
Regarding public speaking, we will not interrupt you. So.
Ty, Ty, that's why I say viewer discretion is advised. He won't be the only one, so please.
I'm Julian Alexander, founder and CEO of a Dream Foundation. I would like to speak to, uh, the available points, one, two, seven. I would like to request the attention of our council members.
So you have three minutes for the items. Go ahead.
Ten-four, thank you. I would like to request the attention of our council members. Um, specifically if we could make eye contact and if like the president had advised, if you wanna hold conversations and or remove yourself from the room. Cause we're gonna, I'm gonna ask for the same respect that I gave you as you saw me standing there or sitting there. Um, in respects to
Look at both of them.
Three, two, one, point one and two for the transportation. Um, even as an organization working to communicate with L A city, uh, to support with the housing and the discrepancy with parking and R Vs. Uh, at our local lockout, we have a coalition of artists and, uh, homeless individuals who keep a perimeter, um, for and keep things secure for our people because of the administration's lack of ability. Unfortunately, to move and progress that forward, the, our lockout location, which is one four six zero Knox Street, nine zero zero one two, is filled now with vagrants. And these are vagrants where in effect, all our work was wasted. Okay?
That's it.
Point number seven, I would like to solicit as a, to be able to partner with the city, um, and the C A O, city administrative officer, as it relates to the mapping of these facilities. Um, as the director at Pico Union Housing Corporation, hello administrators.
You did, just now, sir. Rwanda.
Gloria Farias, we had partnered with L A city in twenty sixteen to develop, uh, the Pico Human Union Chamber of Commerce where we utilize data and geospace technology to acquire the same results that you're seeking in this, in this prerogative. And us as a third party, we can make ourselves accountable. Uh, I appreciate Ms. Eunice Hernandez, who is not respecting, again, the request of president. Uh, and she's speaking on the side and she just shrugged her shoulders in advising because we have worked to communicate not only with her department, but Kevin De Leon, Harris Dawson, and numerous others. Moving to public comment, I'm advising that the fruits of our leadership represents what our leaders are. Kevin De Leon, why did you take a picture of me yesterday if this is being recorded? I saw you and it's recorded.
Speaker, this is not on the agenda and you've exhausted your time on item seven, so please move on to another item.
Um, it was, uh, can we restart? It was public comment. I lost ten seconds.
Okay, so you have one minute for general. Go ahead.
Wonderful. And I would like a formal response, Mr. Kevin De Leon, because I did submit every single council member here over the weekend, including the mayor and the city clerk. A, uh, community partnership agreement as long as multiple tiers of models. I, the only reason I'm not a firefighter.
Why does he have a tape measure out?
I'm wearing four knee braces, but I did it for three years. I jumped into brain.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Pause this time. Mr. Herman, this is your only formal warning. You are disrupting the meeting. Yes, motions can disrupt the meeting.
Oh my god. Oh my god.
He is distracting everyone here.
He is not distracting me.
I, that's fine, speaker. Speaker.
I'm gonna request up until forty seconds, please.
You, we have paused your time.
I understand.
So this is your only warning, Mr. Herman. Okay. Speaker, go ahead.
It's like a, I'm telling you, like a seven-year-old little boy.
So I'm gonna request that forty seconds.
I love it. I love it, dude. He's funny, man.
Mr. Kevin De Leon talked for five minutes about traveling to Japan yesterday and we have to put up with it. I'm requesting that another ten seconds.
Look at the state measure.
So we paused your time when the disruption was going on?
The disruption was on yours, sir. Mr. President, can I have my another thirty seconds? We've been working since October, Mr. Dawson, to solicit in your team, neighborhood southwest, neighborhood council meeting.
They don't care about you, bro.
October sixteen.
What are you gonna learn?
Ms. Eunice Hernandez, on, in June, I advised Mr. Martin, right, that it was nine-one-one emergency.
Speaker, your time has expired. We need to move on to the next public comment.
Remember this in November, sir.
Speaker, you've been asked politely to leave the podium. So again, this is your only warning. You are now disrupting the meeting. So please
Sir.
vacate the podium so we can move on to the next public speaker.
Oh boy, here you, there they come.
Next speaker, please.
Oh, here goes our friend. Shanika Figueroa. Love this dude. This dude's great.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, uh, I will lower my voice to protect our Spanish translator and I would like to speak on everything, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Start with number fifteen.
Look at him dancing. Look at Sean.
Uh, next item number sixteen, language switch.
Look at Mr. Herman dancing.
Paging Mr. Herman.
He's going to get him to tell him to stop dancing. Licking him off? He is.
Alright, can you pause this time? Mr. Herman, you have been warned already.
Mr. Herman, you are, you are ordered, you are ordered removed from this meeting. Not a threat. You just need to remove.
Alright, so Mr. Herman, you have been warned twice and now have you been ordered excluded from this meeting. So you are excluded pursuant to rule twelve.
You're disrupting the meeting.
Speaker, I'm sorry. Just bear with us.
Rule seven, rule twelve. Basic rules of human decency. Get out.
Says, yeah, ladies and gentlemen, at least he got his, he got his shit in. That's why he knew, but, you know.
Mr. Herman, I need you to make your way towards the exit.
There he goes.
Need to continue with public comment. And for the record, Mr. Herman is still disrupting this meeting and we have now had to wait over a minute and so has the speaker at the podium.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, I have not started my general public comment. I already lost six seconds.
Correct. You, you still have the fifty-four seconds for the items. So once-
But I have not even, that six second, I haven't, I haven't started.
So.
Uh, for the next item is, uh, for the next item is number seventeen and then after seventeen, I will go to general public comment.
Go ahead.
Just wanna slap.
Speaker, you have one minute for general public comment.
Start a general public comment. Start the comment, darn.
Stop, shut up, Blob. He's singing.
Can't be commenting on the items. You have to switch to general public comment. Sounds like the same comments from the items.
Why are you being racist, Blob? All sounds the same. Is that what you're saying, Blob? I'm gonna put him some instrumentals for him. Ping Jing. This one goes hard.
So speaker, your time has expired.
This shit went hard, that last one.
And again, just so you know, I know we said this before, if you would like an interpreter, uh, and this goes for anybody, if you give us some heads up, we will do our best to get an interpreter here, so.
Face-only mom good love.
Good morning. Which item would you like to speak to?
Um, number thirty-nine and, uh, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item.
Alright. You don't care who I am?
No.
Um, good morning, Adam Smith from the L A Community Action Network. This morning, Human Rights Watch released
Of course I do, Brett.
A comprehensive report on criminalization, which among many damning stats shows that over ninety-nine percent of all infraction citations are written on unhoused people in the city of L A. This city and its politicians too often claim to know that criminalization doesn't solve houselessness, yet this strategy continues to be the constant practice. Since the grant pass, grant's pass decision, citations for forty-one eighteen continue to climb. In Skid Row, those tickets have gone up over five hundred percent. In C D eleven, they have at least quadrupled. The city continues to create zones where people cannot exist, including two hundred and eighty locations since twenty seventeen, restricting where R Vs can be. We didn't, we don't need more laws restricting where poor people can exist, whether that's in a tent or like the ordinance council member park is asking the city attorney to write. We need permanent housing like the Venice Dell project currently being blocked by council member park and the city attorney.
General public comment.
Criminalization and displacement and shuffling people around isn't a solution. Yesterday, at a sweep in C D eleven, after council staff reportedly encouraged houseless residents to move to Cotner Avenue in C D five, ultimately, folks were offered congregate shelter beds in South Central. Why would houseless people on the west side be sent to C D eight, C D nine, C D ten and beyond? Are there not houseless people in those districts, council member Harris Dawson, that could use those local resources? This is a practice we've seen through inside safe operations on the west side as well. What is the responsibility for council members to create and offer housing or at the very least shelter options in their own districts for their own constituents?
Yes, this is real, Chicago.
What is the responsibility to stop blocking permanent housing opportunities like Venice Dell project?
Funny thing is, is people like him, they always vote for people like these guys. They all vote blue. They're all progressives. Anything progressive turns to shit. They want social housing.
I don't know what I'm gonna say. Everything is closed session and thirty, was gonna speak on thirty-nine, but someone else spoke on it. I can't speak on that.
Thirty-nine is open if you'd like to speak to thirty-nine.
No, I can't, cause she, she spoke on it. She was, she totally-
So I'm gonna give you one minute for general public comment. If there's other items you'd like to speak to, please let me know.
Sean from Canoga Park.
What about seven? Is that a closed session or no?
So item number seven is also open.
Oh, fine. Okay. Sorry. Item number seven.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item.
Item number seven and general public comment.
Yes, and you have one minute for general.
God, most of these items are closed sessions. Item seven on four. City Attorney, general public comment.
Okay, general public comment. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Um, I'm Sean Murphy. I miss my fans. I don't think you're gonna like what I'm gonna predict. Depression's coming, great depression might be coming back. Crimes are still, people are still getting stabbed on the metro. Uh, we should not have the Olympics. I am against it. I hated it in eighty-four. I'm still hating now. We should not have an Olympics.
No ray gun.
Depression might be coming back. Bob, I'm glad to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like Sean, cause he's so awkward.
Good morning. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Oh, here we go. Viewer discretion is advised.
Thank you jungle bunny.
Oh, fuck.
So number fifteen, the unelected Heather Jabba the Hutt? Yes.
You support it?
Of course. That's a shit hole.
Thank you.
It's from the REAP program. And then another one by the unelected one. Look at this, South Mariposa Avenue, eight-three-three. No, that's a nice area. I don't know about this. Let me ask my building advisor, Kevin Lyons. Should we approve this one here, number sixteen? Okay, he says, okay, yes, I'll go ahead with it. Then C D eleven, the evil one, Tracy Irene Park. And giving the evil one in Ramsgate Avenue. I think we better ram this one right up the asses of the city. Yes. Anything named after horned animals, I support. And anything that Tracy Park does, it's remotely evil, I support. Then number eighteen, let's see. Oh, look, he's back, C D eight. Mr. Sneakers. Yes, as you know, Blob, we have video proof that he left the chambers while his name was on the board. Let's give him a hand. That's beautiful. Yeah. Yes, he wanted to be here, but then he wanted to be in two different places at the same time, Kevin. Was he receiving a bribe? But don't worry, I snitched him out to the L I P D.
What about the item?
Oh, the item's a piece of shit. Let's see here. The Department of Mental Disabilities? Patients getting mental health? Yes. And what are the three signs of mental health problems? Number one, people that sniffle and blow their nose all year round, even out of flu season.
And now that-
Number two, people that excessively eat during business meetings. And number three, people that don't respond to phone calls for emergencies. Yes. So I think somebody here, maybe one or two, might qualify for this relief. Yes.
No, bro.
Mental health is a good thing. Remember the late Richard Alatorre, for example? Um, didn't he take that wonderful drug we call cocaine? Yes, you put a little bit of it on the table and you use a little needle there. No, actually, it's a razor blade. Oh, razor blade, you divide it up. See, you have to do that, Kevin. It's called stepping on it.
Speaker, I can't tell which item you're speaking to, so.
Well, we're trying to, yeah, we're, we're trying to educate people on how to get more value out of their drug purchases for their mental health.
Alright, so please stick to the agenda. I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
Well, I mean, you know, you're not letting me speak. Okay, well, go ahead. So let's see here. Number nineteen, yes. Yes, that comes from Kevin's mental mind and we'll support it. And then of course, number twenty, for Hugo Stalin, yes. Another piece of shit.
General public comment.
Hugo Stalin.
Yes. So yesterday, you had a problem with language barriers. So of course, the Sepulveda Basin is burning down because of Imelda Luisa Padilla. And remember that she won't abate a public nuisance on federal property. That could be a federal criminal statute charge. And of course, um, we wanna honor the rich, rich Alatorre as, uh, he never got indicted.
I don't think so badass.
Because the reason he didn't get indicted was because he knew how to go to the right people. Like somebody we know named Price. And we don't blame people for using cocaine, do we? Right, Imelda? No, of course not. No, we have nothing against that. Drug users on the council are a tradition of history here. So finally, we wanna fuck the L A P D for not solving the burglaries in Encino and of course, fuck the pumpkin head and the pumpkin head.
Okay, so I'm being told that there are no other speakers, so we have exhausted, uh, public comment in the room. Mr. Spindler, please vacate the podium.
Get out of here.
Okay, let's go to the phones.
All right, viewer discretion advised for the phones now, ladies and gentlemen. You never know who you're, or what you'll hear.
Caller with the last four digits, seven-two-five-five, please unmute yourself and state the items you would like to speak to.
All items and general public comment, please. This is Richard Serrano.
You have three minutes for the items.
I've got three minutes and one minute for general public comment. Oh, thank you. Um, going through the list here. Seven and thirty-nine. Autumn and corn site, so let's go with seven. Last time, we had a situation that we parked, had got, passed through elections here, or votes, for her area describing RVs and posted signs. Emile Del Padilla voted on it, but the next day, she had no clue she did.
Her.
So I'm glad that she's bringing it up today on RVs and oversized parking. Please pay attention or put a little sticky somewhere on your desk saying that you're voting on it because the day after you voted for it, for Ms. Park, you had no clue you did.
There's Ms. Park right next to her.
Just saying, if you're gonna vote on something, pay attention on what you're doing in the city council. Your staff had no clue on how to describe an RV when it was plain language describes twenty foot in length, eight feet in height. But your staff had no clue. You had no clue in some valley meeting. Number thirty, uh, thirty-nine, I was, I guess, that followed suit, same thing. You're gonna put positions and places located in your area, post them. Only way you're gonna get these places off is like Park did, get it posted. Get it posted. If you're not gonna put signs up, they got the right to park there. Ignorance of the law. Get the people to do their jobs. General public comment. I'm going to, again, we're gonna go to, you guys need to change the definition for sidewalk repair. Moise, uh, street services is under the understanding that it has to be done in cement, ADA. But now, every little, uh, asphalt, which is pretty much plastic, it's smooth. You don't have to do bricks. You can lay it out as asphalt. The water sinks through it and it's smooth enough to transition. It'll cost your budget. It'll cut the budget, excuse me.
Those are old ones, Les.
It'll cut the budget and timeframe to repair the sidewalks.
Just going back in them every once in a while.
Is it accessible for ADA? Yes, look it up. But you guys need to change that in the books in order for Keith Moise to be able to do that at street services. He's going by what's in the book. There's new material out there. Save money and time for the city. I really do care about this city. Smoke and scan again.
General public comment.
Very much appreciate you guys' support.
There's two. Shout out to Richard Serrano. Vote Serrano.
Speaker, you still there? General public comment? Oh, was, okay. So, next speaker?
So they're not even paying attention. You would've been paying attention. You'd know that was his general public comment. There's your D E I sound guy up there in the top corner.
All items and general.
Oh, under over eleven, under over eleven. Under over eleven.
All right, so let's start off with item twenty. Item twenty is a street banner for the Rampart Village Neighborhood Council. Not sure why we need this street banner. I mean, nothing, I, I don't know what much about the Rampart Village Neighborhood Council, but maybe we can just seems like street banners are not the best use of money right now. We have twenty-one, that's a union, pay all your workers, all your real workers. You know, you had your police contract that's now giving you into a giant deficit that, that multiple officers illegally, you know, there's, there's multiple officers in the city council chamber that are getting payments that they have had a conflict of interest in paying because they were removing people who opposed their salary increases. So, but yeah, you don't, you don't pay your workers other than
What is he doing with the phone?
Your actual workers. We have item thirty-nine. Item thirty-nine is banning more RVs, massive RV ban, sucks this. Get housing and services for unhoused people and you won't have homelessness. I mean, you know, you, you keep saying, but it's a simple solution. I mean, yeah, you have to get the housing and services, but why, why don't you focus on that instead of criminalizing homelessness, which you've spent so much time doing? And you keep claiming, oh, yeah, we do oppose what the governor's doing, but you know, you, you don't really. You just pretend to while you do your own crap. So, fuck what the governor's doing and fuck what you're doing. Get housing and services for
Oh, come on.
It's simple like that. Let's go to general comment.
Come on, put your phone back to your face.
Um, for general comment, I would like to go over some of the council rules. I think Paul needs a refresher on his prized council, fucking council rules. He loves them so much, so let's, let's go over some of the ones that he doesn't pay as much attention to. So, let's just go into here. We have, there's one rule, there's council rule twenty-two. That's the order of business in the council, which clearly states that all public comment goes before any votes on any items regardless of whether it had a hearing or not, regardless of whether it was called special or not. You're not supposed to vote on any items according to council rule twenty-two before you've taken multiple agenda, comment, and general public comment. It clearly states it right there. Public comment's also before hearings, public hearings. So you don't follow your own rules of order in the, in the council. You just keep creating arbitrary rules that have not, that are not on the rules of the council. You know, you, you don't even try. You, you're just creating, you're just
Wow, not one. I think it might've been. You guys are right. Maybe he did record it. Find that hard to believe that he not won them.
Yes, my name is Jason and I'm a smoke and scan viewer.
There's three.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, let me get, um, all available items, general public comment, and did I get my translator to speak nigger?
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Thank you, that pumpkin head. Um, anyway, um, I know you have translators in there, but I wonder if y'all could have translators on the streets or maybe, um, on call cuz the other day I was down on Figueroa, I was sitting in my truck and, um, this little Mexican chick come walking up to me there.
So, caller, this is not on the agenda, so I need you to get onto the agenda. I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
Well, I was asking about translators and stuff. I guess I can get my one in, um, in here to speak niggers for me. So I wonder if I get one, maybe one out down on Figueroa, if I could have a call-in translator to help me out with some things there.
So you can speak to the translator issue in general, but it's not on the agenda right now?
Well, how do I get a translator for Friday when I call in?
Okay, so I've asked you to please get back on the agenda. I'm gonna move you to general public comment. So you have one minute for general. Go ahead.
Sup, Tajie?
Hi, mighty wide you, sir. Anyway, as I was saying, um, um, I was down on Figueroa the other day and this chick come walking up to my car and she was smelling like doorbought guacamole and that, um, fried twisty stuff they covered in sugar, cinnamon sugar they, they gave me for dessert.
Churros?
And she leaned over in my car and I'm like, bitch, you know you smell like leftovers? And I guess, because she was Mexican, whatever, she didn't understand me, so I don't know, she just pulled down her pants and began peeing on my tire dirt. I'm like, what the hell is this shit? This bitch don't understand what I'm saying? That's why I'm saying if I could have a translator on call, that'd help there. You know, if I had like a translator to call in and I had my moniker right here, um, gag ball, right, you know, I can roll my Rs half the time there. That would be a great lesson that'd help me there. You know, if we had one that speaks niggers, I know we got a couple of black people that like the black gentleman there, you know, he ain't much work for damn up there, but, um, um, if I could have one, that'd be appreciated, um, but shout out to the smoke and community as usual, doing our thing, having a good meeting, Damon, you putting it down for us there. And, um, y'all have a good one.
I love Jason, man.
Calling user four, please unmute yourself and state the items you would like to speak to.
Oh, fuck. That's too funny, man.
Calling user four, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Look at Pumpkinhead risen her up. Getting her number right now, getting the digits.
I'm going to move on to the next caller.
Sup, Baton?
Caller with the last four digits, two-six-one-six, please unmute yourself and state the items you would like to speak to.
Yeah, it's Eric Prevenant. Thank you.
The lawyer.
I'd like to speak on the available items and a general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for public, general, so go ahead with the items first.
Okay, just a quick point of order before my clock starts. Uh, for the last three meetings, you omitted me intentionally, so I'd like to examine the process.
So for the point of order, you're welcome to speak to it during general, but for the first three minutes, we need you to stick to the items.
Lawyer fight.
Okay, I'll get to that point of order about the illegal behavior on your part at general. Very good, okay. So, item seven. Here, you have the oversized, uh, parking, you know, oversized vehicle parking ordinance. You know, I remember during the campaign and stuff that we were looking for a kind of a do no harm approach, and I think that there is some pushback as to where specifically three vehicles go. There's something called safe parking now. There's also something called the preferential parking district. Now, this is a great program if you happen to be a NIMBY neighborhood person who doesn't want people who's parking anywhere nearby where they live. Unfortunately, it's totally inappropriate. And people remember that while we were advocating do no harm, Mike Fawnin was upstairs and now Tracy Park in the absolute C D eleven is doing the same routine, which is wiring every available street up so that they can basically ticket and cite and apply boots. The Englander was the great leader of applying smart boots in the most appalling way possible to people who were just trying to evade capture. And thanks to the license plate readers, that all the crazy lunatics like, you know, Corian and John Lee and Bob Blumenfield, all while holding up the progressive sign, just wire shit up big time for clamping down uh, to protect NIMBY residents, so that happened. Now, in terms of the Paralympic Games and the Olympic Games and the working groups, this is one of the great frauds of all time.
Speaker, this is not on the agenda, so again, you can speak to it during general if you'd like.
Item twelve, you said twelve was on the agenda, sir?
No, I, the items that are open are one and two, item seven as amended, items fifteen through twenty-one, and item thirty-nine.
Okay, can you hold my time while you lecture me about stuff? Groot, honestly, I'm very concerned that your meddlesome behavior is gonna do damage to the city.
Again, this is not on topic. You can speak to it during general if you'd like.
Fair enough. Let me get back on the items. I'm gonna get back on the items, okay? And am I allowed to speak about the, 'cause today there were three separate items that amounted to four million dollars in settlement payout for various retaliation and calling.
So the closed session items are not open for public comment. Public comment was exhausted at committee.
Until we get to general. All right, let's, let me do this. Let me roll those over to general and I'll get to those reef items and mention what a appalling thing to do to stick an agenda full of items that people don't want to speak about really is. And again, to be the meddlesome little prick is just, I, my heart goes out to the growths, okay? That's what I'll say. Thank you. Now, um, getting to the stuff that is available on the agenda. Uh, you, you have sixteen closed session items. You're saying there's no comment for those? Okay, well, this is a good spot to launch. Here's a public comes around and they say, what do you got? And you don't show us what you've got. You just read out the number. We say, well, hang on, hang on. Why are we paying one point one five million dollars? Why are we paying? And the answer is, it's already been done, sir. You're excused. And though Blumenfield did a great job of saying that we pretty much agreed up in the city with the city attorney's recommendations, that really doesn't cut it. And it gets to a much bigger problem, which I'm gonna be explaining in great detail in my Pulitzer Prize-winning essay about, uh, the committee exemption, because it has to be said finally that you're just running a corrupt shop where you try to put out of view the things you don't want the public to see, but we see it. Because there are those of us who know how to see it and talk about it and write about it. You can find my articles at City Watch L.A. if you're interested. But what you really need to do is clean up your act.
I love it. One lawyer fighting another lawyer. Fucking great. He gots to love it. He forfeited the rest of his time.
Speaker with the last four digits, seven-zero-five-six, please state the items you would like to speak to.
That's Stacy.
Although, uh, if you could turn down whatever device you're using to listen to this meeting, we would appreciate it. There's an echo. So which items would you like to speak to?
All items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for the items.
Nineteen-time Grammy Award winner, Stacy Seeger-Bollinger.
Okay, um, I'll begin by talking about the rent escrow account program. Um, I think I've said it enough times, but these are just really frequent agenda items. Um, when landlords don't fulfill their end of a contract, they get no penalty at all. They just have to, um, get around to doing the things their contract says they have to do whenever they feel like it, and then they're entitled to every penny of rent that they charge, regardless of how egregious it is. They're not forced to recompense tenants for time that they have to take or resources they have to expend dealing with the maintenance that their landlord has to perform. Um, I just think it's pretty awful how much they can get away with and how little they're held to account. So, items seven and thirty-nine respectively both deal with RV parking. I think that the way the city approaches this is abominable, it's abhorrent. It's really awful because we're not considering these RVs as people's homes. We're treating them like nuisances. And there's, well, as Councilmember Rahman has said before, the city is overparked. Councilmember Rahman thinks we have, um, so much available parking. And while there is a lot of empty lots uh, that are guarded and kept empty for liability purposes, for example, at all of these old abandoned ninety-nine stores um, on Roscoe and Van Nuys Boulevard, there's a huge lot by a building near Walmart that used to be a Montgomery Ward. Montgomery Ward hasn't been in business in, since the nineties. Um, but there's still a sign that you can read faded Montgomery Ward and a huge empty lot that's leased out and rented, um, for, for studio parking for Hollywood, um, production shoots. Um, there's so much space we could be using to build housing or to put places where people can live comfortably with these RVs. Um, like not in gross, shanty RV parks like the one Tim McCosker, credit to him, fought against and told the landlord, um, up to Chambers and gave him what fur and said, you can't, um, charge these tenants to live in these awful conditions the way you are. Good job, but we can create nice, comfortable places for people with RVs who would like to live in their RVs to be. That would actually be, um, sustainable to have nice, big facilities where they could park their RVs, where they would have, um, things like locker rooms and showers and recreation and communal areas. Um, these are old, old concepts, um, and we could use some of that fair parking that Councilmember Rahman likes to use as an excuse to ignore, um, workers and tenants when we're expressing our concerns about parking. We should be using that parking well, and the way we could be doing that is giving these RVs a place to go.
General public comment, go ahead.
Sherman Oaks, we are lacking parking.
Artist's song title.
For walkers and residents, yeah. And when we express our concerns to Nidia, she says that there is enough. Of course, she thinks that she has parking at work and home. When we try to express our concerns and problems, you ignore our distress and you just carry on. You gave up on your fight. You lied when you said you were pressuring. K D L to resign. Shout out to Smoke and Stan and Brock Landers and Jason and all of my wonderful friends, Andrew and Camille and my wonderful husband Christopher. I love you all. I'll see you Friday.
There's five. Nineteen-time Grammy Award winner. Thank you, Stacy.
Speaker with the last four digits, one-eight-eight-one, please state the items you would like to speak to.
Yes, good morning. Uh, all items and public comment.
And Dito.
Three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Thank you, the oversized parking. You know, the city, the city, this council has failed. You had so many opportunities and you tried to retreat with her. Uh, the speaker before made it very clear, there were so many options that you folks could have done and used, uh, to house, um, these individuals. But let's, let's take it a little further, okay? Let's talk about, uh, so-called victims, people who were because they tried to bring these individuals into housing and they refused. Why? Because of people like Mr. So- Mr. Soto. You say that people don't want to become police officers because of a certain situation. You know why they don't want to become police officers? Is because you and others, so-called progressives, make excuses for crimes. A man like me A man like me, seventy, can't go to the city council without being threatened, without being assaulted. But that's okay. We've got it. We can take it. Okay? But a- again, the city council, you failed in this area. Uh, I do have to give kudos to Mr. Dia. Her area has really improved. Uh, the twelfth district, Mr. Lee has increased. Uh, and so if we, if you can do that to go out the city, we can house people and we can take care of issues. But Mr. Soto, when you tell the world, uh, that justice has not been achieved when you do the pledge of allegiance, why not? Why are, why will we even think about getting up off their, uh, knees? Because people like you tell them that they don't have to. They can stay, uh, you know, victims. So may I move on to public comment?
Yes, so you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Uh, yesterday, it's four, uh, three, uh, votes, uh, from Smokin' Stan and their crew. I didn't know Jason was the boss man over there, back supporting him, uh, police officer. Uh, with the, uh, law enforcement and the other side of law, uh, opposite law enforcement. Uh, you know what? If you can't even go to a city council meeting and, you know, a gentle guy like Jason.
Fuck, I can't hear him.
Caller, we're having a hard time hearing you and I think there's an audio issue on your end.
Uh, like people like Jason and victimizing, uh, kids and, and women, et cetera. And Smokin' Stan sends me texts letting me that they're coming after me. You know, come, come, I'm here. Come, I'm ready, you gutless bastards. I'm ready. Thank you.
Who's texting him? Why did you put your number out there? I certainly didn't text it, nor do I want any of you texting him.
Caller with the last four digits four, six, one, zero. Please unmute yourself.
There's seven. Will we hit the fifteen that we hit yesterday? What have I done to this meeting?
Yes, we can hear you. Which items would you like to speak to?
I like to do all available items and, uh, general public comment, please.
Okay, good afternoon or good morning. You have one or three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I think it's funny that you almost say good afternoon because you're used to public comment start, you know, being in the afternoon. Um, regarding the REAP item, uh, it's really a shame that contracts don't mean anything. I, I hear a lot from old people about the social contract, which is something that does not exist. Uh, REAP involves things, contracts that do exist, people's leases to their homes, uh, where they live at, where they're staying, however the fuck you want to put it, their residence, things that they mark down where they live at so they can vote. All these different things, right? And yet you would think that's all very important. So the contract involving such an important commodity would be ironclad. Neither side could break. And yet here we have a program designed to incentivize landlords to breach their contracts because they will not even receive a slap on the wrist. Instead, they just get, their money is put in a sign out until they get around to un violating the contract, which is, that just sounds crazy to me. So that's bullshit.
He's the ringleader, Tajee.
And, uh, and fuck you guys for acting like it's so, it's such revolutionary idea. It's not even piecemeal. It's not even a platitude. It's not even crumbs. It's a goddamn fucking travesty and you're gonna rot in hell for that shit. Um, what else have we got? Uh, oh, the RV parking, I believe item thirty-nine, right, is available for comment or no?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, uh, city attorney. I think you do all right. Um, so we have a lot of empty spaces in LA. LA gets called a lot of things. Big is one of those things. And you usually hear a lot of things about people saying like we're on top of each other everywhere and that's true. While we do have dense areas of populat- population, we have a lot of areas of industrial space and office space just open wide. And the parking lots, like a beautiful person said earlier, are being guarded for liability purposes. You, we literally have police and private security guarding empty spaces and ticketing people for parking in public spaces. They don't have anywhere to go because you won't do anything to fight the rising rents in the city. So if you can't afford to live somewhere, why would you give up your home that you already own? Because some people consider it an eyesore. You know what I consider an eyesore? These fucking tacky, tasteless, god awful, gaudy McMansions that are keep being popped up through the fucking neighborhoods all across the city. And yet somehow we ha- we, we need space for, for affordable housing and what are we gonna do all this stuff? And yet more McMansions every day and we ticketing people that have nowhere to go because we don't like the way the RV looks. Those are homeowners too. You can, you could branded a recreational vehicle because at one point, America had something called vacation and would travel the country, regular families in those things. We don't live in that world no more. Those are people's homes now. You need to get the fuck up with the times and recognize reality of today. General public comment. Candido made a prediction last year about an earthquake that was gonna happen in City Hall. And yesterday I heard a seismologist or whatever the fuck they're called, um, talk about how these recent surge earthquakes have been along a very dangerous fault line. I think it was called, uh, the Puntis Fault Line. And that shit runs right through downtown LA. So I, I think it's kind of funny. I think y'all should really check yourselves, get right with whatever you believe in. Uh, Hugo, I want to know why Hugo Soto Martinez took a picture of my wife last Friday while she was giving public comment. Uh, I think you guys are weird when you do that shit. And I'm gonna maybe try to figure out a way so I can get that shit off your phone. Um, you're really sad excuse for whatever you call yourself. You're not a leftist. You're a capitalist in very thin, uh, sheep's clothing. And you're a pandeho times a thousand. It's really sad. And Unicef, you're pathetic. And Nidia, my wife said everything needs to be said about you. You're a fucking piece of shit.
Caller, your time has expired.
Nidia ain't even there today. I ain't seen her. She's not sitting in her chair.
Caller with the last four digits one, eight, seven, one. Please state the items you would like to speak to.
No more Valley gun code drops?
Uh, general public comment.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
Okay, so it's another week and we have more fires than the Sepulveda Fire Basin. We had a twofer on Sunday with two separate areas fired all day practically. Padilla, Ramon, Blumenfeld all have districts surrounding the toxic fire basin. The area is owned by the Army Corps of Engineers, but it's supposed to be maintained by LA City, which it's not. This is a joke. We know it's clearly both an arson zone at this point and home to a hundred to two hundred people who can't control their daily fires of burning plastics.
It's true game pack.
The city wants to use the fire basin for the Olympics. The developers want to develop parts of the land that don't flood. Everyone wants to use the area but not protect it. So here's the deal. If LA City can't properly protect the neighborhoods surrounding the basin, then maybe the state of California needs to take over responsibility for the Sepulveda Fire Basin. At least Governor Newsom has indicated desire to protect, protect areas adjacent to waterways. So let's start working on it, people. People surrounding the fire basin. Let's start working on this.
Yeah.
Caller with the last four digits zero, eight, five, zero. Please state the items you would like to speak to.
Those people standing there.
Lydia Fonsef for the items thirty-nine and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item.
Thank you. Um, you know, the emotional spiritual toll that it takes to go through this process, it's not a democracy, it's a demokery. And especially with this election coming up, we somehow are knee to City of Angels. And item number thirty-nine touches and magnifies it so much so that here we are, losing our minds and our spirits to the words and these agendas and these minutes and the things that y'all vote on that don't represent the people. Because we have elderly dying. Twenty-five percent of the population that are on the streets dying are elders, they're senior citizens. And there's a lot of us that are closer to that age and people claim, the community claims their elders and very much so names their elders. A lot of people are older and they're stumpy people and they think that they know what, you know, what's right and they know everything. But on the spiritual basis, I think that we really have to consider the green space that golf courses have. Yeah, and in speaking with the golf courses, just knock down the fences and pull up the RVs. There you go. And, and I have to speak about breakdancing. Um, I'm anti-Olympic and to add salt to the wound, we have no breakdancing twenty-twenty-eight.
No, no Raygun.
With a major city pretty much nurturing and growing and out of pains and woes of racial, social and economic classism and racism, it's an insult to have the Olympics, but it's a further injury when we don't have breakdancing on the schedule. We have squash.
Yes, Aton, they already spoke. You missed it. It was big, crazy.
Um, we're gonna be petitioning, we're gonna be moving that, um, we bring that back. Breakdancing belongs here in our streets. It belongs in our communities. It belongs to the youth of the future and the seven generations. So when it comes down to it, um, we'll be outshining the Olympics on a side event. Because we know that, uh, ten million dollar donations as sponsors are not important to the City of Angels.
Caller, your time has expired and Mr. Sher, I believe we've taken public comment for about thirty minutes, um, on the, on the phones alone, so. Okay, then let's, let's move to the next item then. What's next on the agenda?
So that's it.
Uh, Mr. President, um, there's a request for item fourteen to go forth with.
Okay, without objection.
And what is, um, the four council that they can vote on now are items?
I vote she puts her mask back on. Never said that to anybody else, but she looked better with her mask on.
Okay, let's, uh, seeing, any members who should speak on those items, one, two, fifteen through twenty. Seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, tally the votes.
Raygun should have won the culture, huh?
Thirteen eyes. Those measures are agreed, are approved. Uh, next?
Next would be item twenty-one and that was amended by motion McCosker Park.
Okay. Any members wish to speak on this item? Seeing no members?
That's it, my bag of puff. Mark Zimmerman, thank you so much. Happy hump day, Mort. Oh, what? No, it's not what I wanted.
Hump day, yeah!
That's what I wanted. Appreciate you, Mark.
This would be, uh, item seven and that was a special based on amendment motion Fernandez.
Dancing is a competition, not a sport. That's just me. It's quite competitive. Requires judges.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President.
I don't know how, it's a point scoring system.
Because we're just looking for a little bit more information, uh, to move forward holistically. There should be nothing controversial with amendments moving forward.
I just don't look at it as a sport. I don't know.
Anybody has questions, please let us know. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Park.
Thank you, Councilmember, um, Blumenfield and colleagues. Uh, I rise today in opposition to these amendments and I ask for your no vote.
No dolls. We're gonna, we're gonna wait for the chippies to.
Were already, um, voted down in committee. And I just wanted to publicly share the reasons for my no vote in committee and why I'm asking for your no vote.
Jesus, why is it so loud with that thing right now?
Um, men, much of what is called for in this amendment is needlessly duplicative of work that has been done by multiple city departments.
Trying to milk it up today.
Is needlessly duplicative of multiple existing programs and processes, including the mayor's own RV program, the CAOs, the protocols established by our transportation commission and others.
Well, our mayor is a Karen.
Colleagues, the crisis of progress today is urgent. The last thing we need is another committee, another commission.
She looks like a Karen. Google her picture. Tell me what you see.
Over multiple years.
Google Karen Bass. Tell me what you see.
What we already know, that those RVs are unsafe and unsanitary and causing irreparable harm in communities across our city.
Yeah, I didn't watch one second of it.
And it's gonna conclude that we need to provide services and housing to those who are residing in there.
Clips of, of that Raygun girl.
Ad nauseam and has been reported on.
I didn't watch one minute of the summer games this year, not one. Travel guy, let's get it. Happy hump day, travel guy. Thank you for the dodo. Big one today and yesterday.
We haven't adjusted a single policy in the City of Los Angeles to account for what other communities in California and beyond are doing in response to grants passed or what's being done in response to the governor's recent order. This is also needlessly duplicative of another item pending before us today, my motion item thirty-nine.
Because they, people would rather vote for these people knowing full well they don't do shit for them than try to vote for the other side. That's why. Jesus, that thing is loud. I gotta turn that thing down.
Around sensitive use sites like pools, parks, libraries, uh, and other, and other facilities where we know these harms are extreme. So again, I ask for your no vote on this amendment seventy. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman.
No, we're not live tonight. We're live Friday.
Thank you, Council President.
Unless we get a chase, then we'll be live.
What I'd like to say is I don't think that this, these amendments are duplicative. If we had this information that the councilwoman talks about, we wouldn't be having this conversation of what to do again with these RVs. We need to have a holistic conversation that brings in folks who have been doing this work for a long time. So we can get stuff across the finish line because, like I said, in transportation committee.
No boxing in? Oh, man, what are they doing, Trump?
Expecting different results. We keep responding to harm after it happens.
It's not the summer games anymore.
This will help us get more information so we can do it more holistically. So I'm just asking for more information, that's all. Because we're, CD one is a district that is not, that has seen that these signs to prevent RVs from parking is not working.
Half of the boxes will probably all be women anyways. Half of them will claim to be men or women.
So I think for equity purposes, for distribution of resources, it's good that we all get on the same page on how we should move forward as a city.
Councilwoman Rodriguez, followed by Mr. Delia.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Hernandez, totally understand and that has been part of the challenges that I know everybody's kind of working to address. And I know that H and H, we are going to be having another deep conversation about, uh, expansion of the RV, uh, program that I've, you know, managed to pilot in my district so that we can expand the city wide. However, I do want to say with respect to your amendment is that creating task force is.
Shut up, Meg.
Uh, it, uh, creates another Brown Act body that then creates a whole nother level of kind of procedural. You know, other challenging issues that I think we're all intending to get to the same place, but it's just for that reason that I can't support the amendment. Because I think a task force is not going to be the most prudent way for us to actually get there.
She's just like Kamala. In a moment's notice, she becomes a saucier from San Antonio.
We share, uh, the challenges and the frustrations.
Gonna make you them collar greens in the bathtub.
About how resources have currently been deployed.
She is the same thing. She turns it on and she turns it off when she wants. When she's talking to Latino folks, because she's Latino, she's rolling her Rs, she's getting up all up in there. When she's talking to the white devil like me, no, not one R is gonna be rolled.
Blatantly not been equitably distributed. And we know that's to be the case. That being said.
She's definitely a saucier.
On the precipice of having, uh, a formalized.
In the bathtub with an F, two Fs.
So it's just for that reason I cannot support your amendment at this time.
Rolling joints for a smoking sand, Seth. I don't, I don't have any weed for you to roll up.
Mr. President, I was gonna, uh, say nothing.
What are you gonna, oh, you want to bring your weed over and roll it up? You can come over there and roll weed up. I don't care.
Amendments were discussed.
Can't talk over the scanners. You're good to go. Better watch out too. Stank fucked me up. You spack the motherfuckers up right now. Things all deboed out right now. Seems like he's a nice little cat right there, just sitting in his little thing, but no, he's an asshole. He's an asshole. Straight attacking this woman. Aw. You're a big boy. Sweet and bite daddy, diddy.
We offer housing, uh, to folks that are living in the RVs. Um, the ratio is not as, as positive as cat weights. The vast majority, uh, have said no or they simply just drive off. They go park somewhere else. So we do need a comprehensive strategy as it relates to RVs. But the one thing underlying is the task force is not gonna help.
This will be fighting fools. There's a video of this dude fighting some dude on the street that didn't like him, came up to him, talking shit to him after he got caught on tape, saying all those bad things. Somebody grabbed him in the headlock. He was scuffling.
Is we must lead first with services. We must lead first with services. To this day, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, I don't know what services means. I still don't know what services means because I know it's not psychotherapeutic services because no mental health services are being offered to unhoused neighbors living on the streets. I noticed that drug counseling to reduce harm reduction because there's no drug rehab counselors or specials showing up to communities. to communities and offering those types of services. Services oftentimes is showing up, introducing yourself and offering a bottle of water. That's what services means. Services don't pay the rent. Ultimately, at the end of the day, they don't feed anyone and services do not provide a roof to put over people's heads. Ultimately, at the end of the day, to deal with the dwelling, with these types of dwellings, you have to create the housing. In this case, as folks know, I create tiny homes, less expensive, dealing with city property, so would have to deal with real estate acquisition costs. And it's fairly inexpensive and we can do it quickly. You have to offer the housing, because if you're not building the housing, what's the solution? We're creating this mired, complex system and, which already exists, and adding more to it. And the only thing I'll say finally is that you, we have to build a housing, uh, in our respective districts to deal with this issue. If we're not, then we're just talking about this issue ad nauseam and doing nothing about the issue.
Like you do with most things. How is it any different, dude?
Thank you, Council President. How is this any different than anything else you guys do? Amendment to see the language in it. Um, you know, RVs aren't really allowed in safe parking. They don't fit in safe parking, so that's why we want to include an assessment of that and have questions around that. And I want, and I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about why I chose the language task force. Uh, in sitting in Transportation Committee, we got a phenomenal presentation from the coalition that's working to bring in other entities and agencies to be our traffic enforcement, removing law enforcement from that, from that work, uh, from those interactions with community. That working group, that coalition was an open space for community to join the city family, to have these conversations of what are the different mechanisms and tools that the city can lean on and community can lean on to make traffic stops safer for everybody, both law enforcement and community. And that's what I'm trying to mirror here is an open and accessible process where community and the city family can work together to find a solution and develop strong recommendations for how we move to, move forward together. In the same meeting that we talked about this in transport, there was a motion that was put forth to, to tow all vehicles that are parked in certain areas, including RVs. And so that's why I think we need to move in a, try to move in a way where we can have holistic conversations, because we're still piecemealing it. As we're having this conversation, there's still motions that are piecemealing it. We give out citations for these RVs and we don't even collect half of the amount of those citations. We don't have enough staff to collect those citations. There's a lot of issues around citing these vehicles and getting them towed. We cannot wait for these piecemealed policies to get us out of these crises. And so that's why I'm moving this forward. That's why specifically it was a task force to create a process similar to what had happened in Transport Committee, because that process was one that I think we should all mirror of inclusivity, community at the table with city family to find these solutions. So I, it's not about creating more work, it's about creating holistic work that is a city we can move forward, because piecemealing this is not working. We don't have enough garages for these RVs. Literally, if you look at the transportation report, you can see we're not getting our bang for our buck in the enforcement of this. So we do need to assess safe parking all throughout our districts together, because if not, some of us are gonna keep taking the hits harder than others. And right now, I can tell you that in Lincoln Heights, predominantly Latino neighborhood, that's taking a hit. Blasal Park is taking a hit. We are trying to build the housing. It's not happening quick enough, but piecemealing this is not working. And so that's why I want a holistic vision, because at the same motion, the same meeting, we had different motions trying to piecemeal this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, Councilmember Hernandez, I want to applaud you for trying to get your arms around this issue. It's an issue that many of us have been grappling with for a, a very, very long time. Um, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez has had a program that works in her district. I have a program that has worked in, in my district in getting people housed and also ensuring that neighborhoods are kept safer.
How much you spent versus how many actually got housed?
That's why I think the underlying motion, uh, that you have, that's I, I'd accept.
Lincoln was a Republican, yes. He also was a Republican.
Forward with the, uh, report backs that that includes.
Funny how much the Democrats quote him.
Respectfully, I'm, I'm going to oppose the motion to amend, uh, because I think it doesn't create the urgency that we need. And creating an additional task force and waiting for a report back on the creation of the task force and so on. Maybe that's a separate track that we can adopt, but I think we should move forward on item number seven right now. And so in respect to, of, of the committee's process, uh, in creating that report for us, uh, I would ask that we, um,
That's it, BJ.
Treat item seven A, if we are going to move forward with what's suggested in that separately, not as an amendment here. So I'd ask that we vote no on the motion to amend, uh, and that we support the underlying recommendation of the T Committee to approve Councilmember Hernandez's original motion.
Yeah, and so was, um, Malcolm X, I believe.
Members, this is a two-vote process. Um, the first vote is whether to accept item seven A as an amendment. That is now before us. So on that item, uh, Councilmember Hernandez is asking for an I vote. Councilmember Park is asking for a no vote.
Jackass, that's your emblem or your mascot. I get it. It was, it was the thought in it. It's hard working. No, hard working of destroying things. That maybe, yes.
Brings us then to the Transportation Committee's report on item number seven, uh, without the amendment. That item is now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard, so let's open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabuate the votes.
I'm just drinking coffee, some Pete's coffee.
Very good. Um. Madam Clerk, what's next before us?
Next would be item thirty-nine, sir.
Very good. Uh, so item thirty-nine was called special for comments.
Depends on what you're trying to eat, Cali.
Members?
Eating filet mignon lobster tail.
Any comments on item thirty-nine?
Especially nowadays.
I think already spoke, so Councilmember Park, go right ahead.
Somewhere between fifty and a hundred bucks for a little six or eight ounce filet and a lobster tail that's not even very big.
That RV encampments bring to our streets and local neighborhoods. Each of us has also heard from countless constituents whose patience has run thin. They are tired of the status quo and they want something done now to address the proliferation of RVs. Uh, my district, where this problem was allowed to fester for many years without action, is a microcosm of the problem. RVs that stay put for weeks, months and years without moving, taking up critical parking, blocking safe passage and devastating local businesses, frequent fires, risking lives, infrastructure and putting first responders in harm's way. Rampant narcotics, stolen goods and human trafficking, sidewalks and storm drains, serving as de facto RV septic tanks causing devastating impacts to our waterways and environment. Children having to walk around dangerous vehicles just to get to school.
Hi, Cali.
And instances of van lords profiting off of the unhoused with unsafe and unsanitary vehicles.
Van lords, you heard that right.
Our city streets were never designed for long-term street camping. Our city is not an RV park and we can't and shouldn't put up with the widespread impacts these RV encampments cause. That's why I introduced the motion before us, calling for the creation of a citywide program that restricts oversized vehicle dwelling around our most sensitive uses like residences, schools, parks, libraries.
I agree with that.
Commercial corridors and other places where those impacts are significant.
Yeah, it's people that.
All while identifying available suitable locations in each council district where individuals can park and access services.
Sounds good to me.
It is well past time that we start taking the actions and fulfilling what our neighbors and our neighborhoods need and expect and are demanding of us. I urge your I vote. Thank you.
Okay, so there are people that take vans that they have, they'll line them up on Figaroa, let's just say, and rent the van out for three hundred bucks a month for somebody to live in. And a lot of these people get some sort of public assistance so they can pay them at the end of the month. You know what I mean? Just like anything else, and they're spending three hundred bucks to not literally live on the street. You're in the van. So they call them van lords.
Uh, today I cast a yes vote in favor of this motion, but let me be clear, this is not an endorsement of the restrictions it proposes, because we don't even have enough staff to enforce it, and I don't believe it'll work. But as a commitment to gathering the necessary data to address the complex issue of oversight vehicle dwellings in our city, as we consider the implications of the proposed restrictions, I hope that we can remain conscious that RVs are not just vehicles and not just where, you know, there's criminal activity sometimes, but they're homes for many people who have been marginalized. These people are families. We literally had a family whose RV was taken in, in our district, um, during a cleanup. That we were not aware that it was gonna happen, so it was, we had to do a lot of work to try to rehouse that family. You know, these people are families, veterans and working class individuals who have been forced to find refuge wherever they can. They are real people who face uncertainty, uncertainty, health risks and the constant threat of being displaced without nowhere to go, but yet another street somewhere else.
You can always take them into your place.
They are and create care-first policies in the future. To move forward, we must explore all locations where RVs could be permitted and follow through with the wraparound services and resources outlined in the motion. Let me be clear, just as we cannot criminalize people into housing that doesn't exist, we cannot restrict our way out of the matter before us. Uh, there's been many restrictions that have tried. I hope the report back from this motion serves as a tool to create care-first policies and policies that actually make a dent in this issue, uh, surrounding our homelessness. We must have a deeper understanding of the full scope of this matter and for these reasons, I am voting yes. Thank you.
But you gotta remember, cheaper cost of living too.
Thank you. Councilmember Soto.
It's why these companies take, like AC Delco took all their factory down there.
You know, very similar to, uh, a vote we had previously.
AC Delco stuff's built there now. Half of your Chevy built down there.
Recommendations, and so I'll be voting in favor of it. But, you know, the report is gonna come out, uh, and I look forward to seeing how that is presented to this body. But what I suspect is going to happen is, uh, which has traditionally happened, is that poor working-class neighborhoods are going to be asked again to bear the brunt of this crisis. I don't think the recommendation is gonna come and say, let's put them in the most affluent parts of the city. I think it's gonna divide this council. I think we've tried to have a citywide approach many times on different issues. It has, as far as I know, hasn't worked yet. Um, and I do think that it will highlight, I think, some of the more, uh, unique challenges that are presented with, with RVs or vehicle dwellings. Is that mo, that these dwellings have a higher propensity to be families and it hires a higher propensity to have children into them. And it has a high propensity of people that are already working, uh, they're just too poor to actually have an apartment. And so I, I look forward to this report. I look forward to the discussion, but I just want to make it very clear that I will never accept a policy that just pushes people from one part of the city to the other. That's why I continue to vote no against any OVO motions that come forward in this council. And I will not accept anything that puts the, the, that puts the responsibility and the onus on the working-class, poor neighborhoods to take the, take this issue head on. And so I look forward to the report, but I will have a very strong opinion, uh, when that does come, uh, forward again. Uh, thank you so much.
Yeah, I mean, um.
Thank you.
I, you know, look, I can't, uh, deny that he's, he's not right either, but there's gotta be a happy medium. I say you talk to the state, you're always getting state funding anyways for the city. And you have a place out in like California City, you blacked off the land and.
Thank you.
Put trailers out there and it'd be cheaper for you to be, buy these people brand new trailers for thirty grand a pop that have flat screen TVs and, and fireplace in there and all kinds of shit. Beautiful bedding, everything's new.
Piggybacks on a sanitation contract.
A full, a kitchen.
Representatives of DOT and sanitation to come forward if I may.
Better off doing that.
And as we're coming forward, I just wanted, want to give some context to my questions.
Get some portable showers out there, even though they have a shower in there.
Looked at, uh, issues, uh, surrounding hazardous materials cleanup work in the port lands. And it was restricted to the port lands.
Get portable toilets and showers that come in and get cleaned every other day, Kale. That's what they do for, for fucking rock shows, Metallica, them, them dudes, if they're on a festival show, it don't matter. You're, you're in a porta shower, dude. It's really a nice shower. It's not shitty.
Providers of services, um, are adhering to.
Just letting you know, unless you're at an arena, most festivals aren't at arenas, they're in festival grounds.
And so in that context, it just gives me pause.
Okay, so they'll come in and do the same with the toilets?
With the sanitation, piggyback, uh, DOT contract, piggybacking on sanitation. And so let's come to that issue. What we have is, as I understand it, we have an existing sanitation contract with the service provider.
I'm just saying, you know, look, there's a lot of undeveloped land in California City, just to, just, that's just an example. And it wouldn't really hurt anybody else's property values, because it's, it, it degrades the property value of everybody who worked hard to buy a home. Now you got an RV park out front. Nobody's gonna wanna buy your house.
Okay, and that, so that contract is in full force now.
See that stuff. And what they're not telling you is what these, a lot of these people do. They're taking the wires from the power poles and running and stringing it in so they can have power. They're, they're turning the hydrants on to, to get water to wash with and then leaving it open.
Really close to the mic, please.
I mean, dude, bringing all kinds of trash, doing drugs, I mean, it's, they're making it seem like these people are all just poor little families that are living in there doing nothing. You know, and just on their luck. A lot of those people are in the shelters because they wanna get their life back. A lot of the ones in the RVs are, are folks who wanna be there because they don't wanna be put in a shelter with your fucking rules where they can't do drugs and alcohol. They can't leave past midnight. Okay, they'd rather live on their own accord, their own rules, than go into your fucking shelter. So they're gonna continue to be out there. But they don't tell you that.
Contract with that contractor to provide those services.
And that's a big thing.
Thank you. So can you, so by piggybacking, what you've done is you, we, the city and the Department of Transportation entered into a contract that's based upon the, the, the competitive process that sanitation engaged in. And now the contract that is proposed here today.
Where else do you go? It's not much undeveloped land within the city limit. That's the problem.
Term of that contract, so yes, uh, to the first part of your question, yes, that's correct. Uh, so the term of our contract is for a five-year term from, uh, retroactively from November first, twenty twenty-three through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, uh, with two, three-year extension off, uh, options, subject to city attorney's approval.
They shit on the street in front of your house, sack.
Here, depending upon how it triggers the, the extensions.
Yes, that's correct.
Or they'll, they'll shit and piss in their RV, because it has a toilet, and then they'll dump it.
Concerns is that if in fact.
You know, in the gutter next to your house, you smell it, and they drive off.
PLA or some other action from the city that improves the working conditions of hazardous waste providers, regardless of what company they are.
Or a bucket, yeah.
That may take effect.
Homer bucket?
And I'm hoping it'll take effect sometime during the term of this contract.
It is gross, Kale.
That at Article eight in the contract.
And again, that doesn't help property values, and those are people that are getting up, working hard every day.
And at Article nine of the contract, there's the ability to terminate the contract without cost or convenience.
So really quickly, the last guy was kinda right. He was saying, hey, you guys aren't gonna put these people when you, when you designate where they can be, it's not gonna be in affluent neighborhoods, nice places. It's gonna be in the working-class neighborhoods. So now they're stuck, they have to deal with it. And these people take over the whole sidewalk, so you can't even walk in the, you have to, you're forced to walk in the street and possibly get hit by a car with your stroller and your kid, picking them up from elementary school, because these people won't get out of the fucking sidewalk. And they pile up shit everywhere, not to mention run wires that could shock you. You know what I mean? It's just, it's a whole problem. And I understand what he was saying too, right there.
For that particular scope of work. So in this example, uh, in the RFP and then in the contract, there is language about establishing a safety plan, making sure that the contractor is providing adequate materials, that, that kind of thing. So we do make sure, and again.
Thank you, job for none. Shout out to Richard Serrano is right, thank you. Thank you, job for none.
Some is kind of through the contracting requirements and then some is kind of on a case-by-case basis, depending on the services.
Yeah, I think in fairness, the reliance on the piggybacking, as soon as this contract's approved, is over. And then they, because the document, the four corners of the agreement stand on their own. I do see that there's a safety plan requirement.
Remember, they're also lighting fires to keep warm. They don't have a heater most of the time in the RV.
On all activities. Is there a regular review of issues that involve?
Cause they're right next to your house.
Contractor, employer and their employees on things like payment and wage theft and hours of operation and breaks, the kinds of things that we are very careful to protect, uh, in our own workplace.
I believe most of that is, is outlined in the, in the contract, yes. And I think, you know, I, I, our department is not aware of any issues that have been reported, but would certainly respond to that per, you know, provisions and also through the Bureau of Contract Administration's wage enforcement.
So if it was the kind of thing that through subsequent action, we ask for that type of reporting on this contract for. for D O T and on the contract with sanitation from whence it comes, that's the sort of thing where we have protection, we have
Shout out to you, Richard. Good to see you.
Require that kind of record keeping, that kind of reporting and we could find out about the working conditions of folks that are are basically our subcontractors.
Right, there are tools that are in the contract and then if anything were to change or come up. The seeing impaired.
Address with the contractor.
Okay, what about the seeing impaired? They're gonna walk right into that whole mess, possibly.
Thank you, very helpful. Last question I will have is. Thank you very much. You've given me a list of the facilities.
Might be a veteran who fought for this country. Not that that makes it any, you know, more important, but I mean, man, how do you just forget the people?
None of them are within the tidelands boundaries of the Port of Los Angeles where where we have an earlier action particularly focused.
Have you watched all the public comment? You're good, calamity.
That's my understanding. Yes, I think it was kind of uh intended as kind of a comprehensive list of our facilities. If there's a particular one that you're concerned about, we can definitely look into that. But I think the contract in general can provide
Calls were good if you missed them.
The as needed hazardous waste removal services for any facility.
My concern mostly is the is what it won't cover, that it will not go into the harbor boundaries under any circumstances.
Right, okay. Good to, good to know.
Mr. President, those are my only questions. I appreciate it.
It's kicking the can down the road, ladies and gentlemen.
Support the action because I think it was uh, you know, lawfully lawfully proceeded. It was, you know, well contemplated. It does not match the goals that I have for that for for protecting this workforce in the future, but
In tournament camps, it's the Democrats.
Be able to engage in further action should be necessary. Thank you.
I mean, dude, they did it to the Japanese and what, fifties?
On the queue.
Late forties, early fifties?
Now before us. On that item, let's add one roll.
It wasn't that long ago.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen nine.
Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, uh what is next before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Without objection, posted and referred, next.
The desk is clear, sir.
Very good. Members, are there any announcements?
Getting close to the ending here, ladies and gentlemen.
Any announcements on the left hand side of the horseshoe? Seeing none. Any announcements on my right?
Donkeys on that horseshoe.
Seeing none. Uh, are there any motions for adjournment? All right, if we could all please rise for adjourning motions. I'd like to recognize first Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. President and uh members, as the uh Webb family is uh joining me here at the desk.
In an increasingly complex and competitive world. It would be nice to just be able to operate our restaurants at an outstanding level and that's all. But we must also be involved in our co-op and national advertising, public relation efforts. Our purchasing and labor committee, our R V O A Bs and N O A B and especially our communities. None of us is as good as all of us. That's the point. Exactly the point that compels and requires your continued and increasing involvement in uh these vital areas of our business.
There we go. I think it's more annoying than getting in trouble. I don't know if it's copyrighted shit, but whatever. Probably is instrumental. It's copyrighted. McDonald's owner, African American McDonald's owner operations. Oh man, I couldn't read all of it that fast. Fuck. He owned Mickey D's, huh? Old wacky D's.
Excuse me, bitch.
Let's get it. He had a McDowell's. He had the golden arcs. Not the golden arches. He had the Big Mick, not the Big Mac. He had old McDowell's. My son works? Got all pissed cause he found out Akeem was working. Rest in peace, Reggie.
He was raised by his grandmother in a one bedroom boarding house here in South Los Angeles who instilled him with a profound and deep drive uh and commitment to uplifting others. He served as a United States Coast Guard member from nineteen sixty six to nineteen sixty nine. And upon his honorable discharge, he began working for the Greater Los Angeles Community Action Agency, the second largest community action agency in the United States, managing over thirty million dollars annually through about ninety delegate agencies in nineteen seventy seven and seventy eight. Later, he joined the McDonald's franchise enrolled in and enrolled in their accelerated management development program. He rapidly ascended through the ranks and was appointed the Director of National Operations in nineteen seventy eight, which led to his relocation to the company's corporate headquarters in Illinois. He returned to Los Angeles in nineteen eighty where he served as the regional manager and later the vice presidents of McDonald's McDonald's in nineteen eighty two and eighty five.
Vice President of McDonald's.
Mister Webb became a McDonald's franchise owner and acquired two rent, two restaurants in the city of Pomona.
Yeah, he was ballin'.
His company, Webb Family Enterprises, eventually expanded to operating sixteen restaurants throughout Southern California, creating employment opportunities and positively affecting the lives of many uh community members.
Oh, he was, he was ballin'.
The Cooperative Economic Empowerment Movement, an initiative dedicated to empowering Black entrepreneurs and fostering the creation of generational wealth within the Black community. He served on a number of boards, including the Los Angeles Urban League, Pomona Valley Hospital, the Los Angeles County Fair and the University of Laverne. In two thousand and four, McDonald's honored Mister Webb with the prestigious three hundred and sixty five Black Lifetime Achievement Award in recognition of his substantial contributions to strengthening the African American community and establishing a lasting legacy
Or a Latino.
Dedication, service and community empowerment.
Or an Asian.
Mister Webb and Mrs. Webb were married in nineteen seventy one and enjoyed fifty three years of marriage and a total uh relationship of fifty eight years. He was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis in nineteen eighty five. Um, Ms. Webb worked diligently alongside Mister Webb to raise funds for research on the disease and support various causes through their philanthropic efforts. Uh, we are joined today uh by Mrs. Webb uh who's with us and their three children, Karim, Kiana and Kyle. Karim serves as the leader of our.
Bros like me with the little jacket right there. I need to get another jacket too. Can't even button it up.
He will be missed uh throughout uh the community. He is a giant in the civic family of Southern California. If you're involved in civic life, uh you likely sat in a room with uh Mister Webb uh where he was always supportive. I remember him especially for being supportive of young leaders, trying to figure things out, trying to make uh their path, always encouraging, always uplifting and always consistent uh with his commitment to our community. And so it is a great loss uh to the entirety of Southern California and uh beyond, but especially the civic family here.
He was ballin'. Sixteen restaurants he was running? Jesus Christ. Couldn't imagine having to run one, much less sixteen of them. Lot of money. McDonald's make some loot, man. Well, they at least did. I don't know about now. It's an interesting blouse. It almost looks like silk pajamas. Those silk PJs?
As we remember, Mister Webb, we celebrate a life marked by love, leadership and an unwavering commitment to community. His journey was a testament to the power of one person's impact and the enduring strength of a compassionate heart.
Could be that true.
Let us honor who someone I call Reggie by uh continuing his work, building bridges, creating opportunities and making a difference in the lives of others. Thank you.
Councilmember Price.
Look at DeLeon. He looks so bothered and.
Mister Webb was really a pioneer, pioneer, he wrote.
He all look like brothers. Fucking Grady, dog.
Conversation we had a few years ago at the fair. Tremendous uh initiative of bringing Black folks to the county fair and highlighting uh the 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 beauty of our community in ways that we haven't seen before. But uh Mister Webb practiced what he preached.
Oh, he, oh, he got it up. About to bust out though.
To admire him. Mister, Mister President, I'd like to add to the uh to the adjournment motion. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, members and to Mister Webb's family and to everyone that he's touched. Please accept our condolences and our appreciation for the grateful city.
Being reached would have been the better word. They're not touched.
Tremendous legacy that he's left behind. May he rest in peace. Councilmember Hat.
Forgot to ask if you add to the adjournment motion.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions, members?
Looks like a game show. It looks like Richard Dawson from Family Feud.
Seeing none. Thank you, members. Go forth and serve the city well. This meeting is adjourned.
All right, the meeting's adjourned. Two hours, twenty minutes on the disat sons and daughters out there. There we go. Live shot of beautiful Amsterdam, the red light district here. People having a good time rolling on their Wednesday, rolling on their Wednesday. Hmm, look at the canal just glistening. That dirty water he got. You don't, you don't wanna, you don't wanna fall in that canal. Some dirty water. Although some beautiful sunsets coming down. Oh man, it's really, it's really picturesque. Cause I got bridges everywhere, cause there's canals everywhere. So, pretty dope. Get you some nice shots if you're into photography. You know, with the tree line and all that stuff, so. Shit, yeah. Yeah, you never see them, Tim. Everybody, well, it's a couple of reasons. One, because most people are more active. Two, a lot of them take bikes and three, the food is better. You look at their ketchup, it's not the same ketchup, although it's Heinz. We both are having Heinz, but ours has additives in it which are just fillers so they can make more, you know? It's like people do with any like drugs, crack. Throw in those baking soda or whatever to to make more of it. And we end up being the guinea pigs to it, cause we were getting our food and it just tastes a little different. Slightly, and that's because of the additives. So that's one big, big thing in there. You know, they eat more healthy. Again, they got McDonald's here. I ate a McDonald's when I was in 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 Holland. But the difference is, there's no drive-throughs. There's no drive-throughs, dude. Not in Germany. Not in Holland. Not that I saw. Not in England. I mean, there's all the places we eat. I mean, I don't, I never saw like Jack in the Box or Taco Bell, but Burger King and McDonald's you saw. They were everywhere. And it's crazy, their little like Mick cafes, oh my God, like no joke, the pastries were like going into the nicest high end pastry shop in your neighborhood. Think that, that clean, that nice. That's how their Mick cafes were. Wild. So they definitely, McDonald's a little better even there. Yeah, better educated. Well, yes, but we're just talking about fitness in that sense, you know? They're more active. They're eating foods that's better for them, less additives. You know? I think, you know, that's really uh that's what it is. You know, if you wanna have that, if you wanna have that food that isn't very good for you, it's there, but they're forcing you to park your car or lock your, stop and lock your bike up and go inside and get it. Can't just pull up in your car with the ease and order and just sit on your phone clicking away. Like we all do, of course, you know? And uh, I think that's a really big um, really a big thing. No trash clean shit. Yeah, when I was there, I mean, you see very few homeless people. I mean, you see them here or there. Never saw any encampments. They're not letting them live there with tents like that. No. No big piles of shit everywhere. The cities would clean that up. And you know, you know, you go into places that are nicer, you know, when you're going into Berlin, the west side's definitely nicer than the east side of Berlin. It's a little ghetto in the east side, but even in the east side, I didn't see homeless encampments. Tons of graffiti. Like they're bombing heavy in Berlin on the east side of the the wall or where the wall used to be, of course. No dookie burning? Not until next month. Although they did, they did uh fire and federally indict for bankruptcy fraud, the police chief, the one with the mic, always telling everybody to calm down, told everybody calm down or I'm gonna make, I'm gonna stop the meeting, y'all gonna have to go outside. Said that just last, just a week and a half ago. Okay, he's gone. So now they're gonna try to get him, I bet, to roll on her. Cause the other guy that used to sit next to her, Keith Freeman, same thing. He was the first domino. Same thing with him, bankruptcy fraud. So there's two dominos. And like I said, she controls a lot more than just Dalton. Dalton and 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 sixteen other cities has the supervisor of the Thornton Township. That township controls sixteen cities or seventeen cities total. Dalton's just one of them. So, yeah. Just saying. You can't eat McDonald's, it gives you a tick. You know, I mean, it's not great food and just, you know, you know, sometimes I guess you're traveling abroad, you want something that's quick and easy. That you, you know, and then to me, I kinda wanted to taste it, cause it's when I was there, I was like, okay, well, let's see what it tastes like here versus back home. I'm so far away from home, I wanna see how they do it. And the only difference, like I told you, was really the soda. I mean, the food was better and well more prepared and you don't order from people at the counter. It's all kiosk, most of these places. You know what I mean? So they just give you the food when it's ready. And the people are making the food and it definitely had, you know, cleaner, more you know, well kept kind of um store to it, that's for sure. Who's Tiff? Come on, Tiffany Henyrd. The mayor. She hiding. Cause she knows, she sees all the dominoes down, so. Yeah, I mean, and now is another thing. I wanted to see if the, you know, the menus were different and they were. They had different things that they don't have here. You know, grilled cheese with bacon. They don't have, on a sourdough bun, they don't have that in here in uh in uh the states that I can think of. I never saw it. You know, and a few other types of hamburgers they didn't really have here either. Sometimes you just wanna see what it's like. Quick and easy, man. Quick and easy. She, you know, she created her own trouble. Yes, she did. Again, she's not a guilty of anything just yet. She hasn't even been charged with anything, just to be clear. But with if what all the trustees are alluding to is correct, and there really should be a lot of charges being filed, that when something is that big of a, you know, of a deal, they're gonna take their time to um you know, uh, make sure that they've gone over everything with a fine tooth comb. And every penny that was taken, they're gonna make sure that they can account to it. And which way it went. And that way, when they bring the charges upon her, it'd be a mountain of charges and there's no way she can you know, wiggle her way if they're free. It's not two things and she happened to get off on those two. They're gonna make it overwhelming. It's where you can't, you know, you you Bobby want a plea deal, that kind of a thing. So, yeah, I think that's what'll end up ultimately happening if what the trustees are alluding to is correct, cause I don't know. All I know is what we hear on those meetings. I haven't even been watching it a a year, I don't think, cause that's when Josh and Trish told me about it. So it's been pretty amazing. We did see the forty three K in Amazon in one day. And an awful lot of charges to Walgreens and a few other places that shouldn't have been. Question is, is she using like a Dalton credit card in Vegas while she's there for the Thornton Township? Things like that too. Are you double dipping kinda thing too? Using one money to, you know, wash the other money. So those are things that could be possible. I'm not telling you it's happening at all. I'm telling you those are things that could be possible. So I think those are the kinds of things that takes a long time to go over. And uh, there was pretty damning evidence with Lori Lightfoot put out. Cause I don't think she's gonna do, you know, fake report in that sense, as much as I don't like the woman. You know what I mean? She could get in trouble for slander if that shit is wrong. You know, so. Will she, we shall see. It can't be much longer, ladies and gentlemen. I don't, I don't think we're gonna get too too much longer. And the sad part about it is, as soon as you pluck those few out, let's just be hypothetical, you pluck Tiffany and the rest of them out of there. It's gonna go back to normal on like a. of there, it's gonna go back to normal on like a city council meeting, you probably don't want to watch, because we love the train wreck. She brings the fire, let's be honest, I mean, that's really what's gonna happen, and, you know, if, if she gets charged, we think she's gonna get charged, that's federal time, you're gonna do ninety percent, you know? Even if she does two years, she'll, she'll do eighteen months, you know, I would say at least a little more, twenty months. So we'll see. We shall see. Current County Transparency Channel, YouTube, government workers being rude to the public, yeah, Kristen, that's where that one chick, the, I think she was like Indian, she threatened the council, city council members, and they arrested her. Like she threatened their lives. And, yeah, like a dummy, so they went and arrested her right away at that meeting, and then you see the, the video of her crying in court, and, you know, in jail jumper. So, yeah, gotta be careful what you say, I hate these people, I tell you all the time, I hate a lot of them, but I don't ever threaten their lives. And that's the difference. I just voice my opinion of my displeasure, that's it, which I'm allowed to, like you are allowed to, like everybody's allowed to. So, shit, yeah. All right, guys, I'm gonna get out of here, but thanks for joining me, got us some meeting in, it was pretty good, I think we got, what, five shout-outs, six, seven, something like that, I think it was seven. Keep those notifications on, because you never know, we might get a chase, we've had a few in the last few days, and I, I shall be around listing cards. I do have some new cards that are going up every day on the eBay, so you can click the link tree and check it out, here, there's the link tree right there, whoop, no, that's not what I wanted. Thank you, Richard Serrano, you got my vote if you get up on there, I'm voting for you, I'm gonna have everybody else vote for you, because I know you care. There's the link tree right there, you can click like and subscribe on that, check out the eBay store. Other than that, I guess that's it. You guys are awesome, shout out to you, each and every one of you, thank you for what you do for me and for each other. Thank you to Richard Serrano, Rob Quan, and, and those kinds of guys, Daniel Gus, who do stick up for, for us people and give these people hell. I wish we could have all three of those folks that I just named on the city council, on that horseshoe, giving them hell, because it would, it would definitely be a better place, I really feel like it would be a better place, just to put these people in check, and even furthermore, to get the city back on track, because I know it can be done, I'm not asking, I'm telling, it can definitely be done, without a doubt. So, you guys have a fantastic day, enjoy your hump day, please keep the notifications on in case there's a chase, if not, I will see you guys Friday morning, ten fifteen AM sharp, for the LA City Council meetings next, madness gathering. So you guys have a great day, behalf of Stink Bomb, the murderer, and myself, I'm out of here.
Hasta la vista, baby.
Yeah, you guys, amiguen.